...of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I would move that we adopt the agenda as published. Second?
Have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes will carry. I'm going to move down to the podium. Are Blake and Holly here? If you will join me up here? And are you with them as well? Oh, you are the photographer. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So, we are promoting Victim Rights Week in Idaho. And we have a group here that is an advocacy group that you represent that fills up by proclaiming this week will give an opportunity to highlight the many nonprofit and community resources that are available if there is a victim of crime. And also to increase awareness of what rights a victim has during the criminal justice process. So, I'm pleased to read this. Whereas Idahoans are the victims of nearly seventeen thousand crimes each year affecting individuals and communities, whereas providing victims with knowledge of their rights and available services further strengthens their ability to recover by restoring a sense of empowerment. Whereas a multidisciplinary response involving collaboration among victim service professionals, criminal justice officials, legal professionals, medical and mental health providers and community leaders is essential to reach and serve all victims, especially those who are marginalized, have disabilities, or live in remote locations. Whereas Victim Rights Week, April 8th through the 14th, 2018, provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that all victims of crime are afforded their rights. And whereas the city of Meridian is dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim responders, and working for justice for all victims and survivors. Therefore, I, Mayor Tammy DeViert, do hereby proclaim April 8th through the 14th as Crime Victim Rights Week here in the city of Meridian. And I encourage all of our citizens to support local efforts to provide health and healing to the victims of crime. And I will present this to you and ask for any comments that you want to share.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Just thank you so much for recognizing crime victims and the need for crime victims' rights and just the healing and support of the community that comes after a crime is so important. And thank you so much for all that you all do.
Thank you.
(applause).
Sorry, I just was going to say one more thing. We wanted to thank the city of Meridian during our crime for their support, for the police department. The response was unbelievable during the crime, after the crime, and for Ada County. We are truly blessed in this county to have that. We just want everybody in the whole state to have the same rights and the same support as we receive in the city of Meridian and in Ada County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
(applause).
Okay, item number five is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as published and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second?
A motion is second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move into community presentations. And 7A is the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council update. Colin and Ben, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
So, the first thing we'd like to talk about is one of the things that has happened from our Treasure Valley Youth Safety Summit in the past, which has now caught up to us now. And so, Ben will be explaining about the opportunities that we've had for the MIACs.
Over the summer at the Treasure Valley Youth Safety Summit, there was a group of MIACs that all came together and they each came up with their own presentations for PSAs. And the winning PSA recently went in and they recorded their PSA. And it was going over engaged driving. And it was very successful and it went really well.
So, we also wanted to talk to you about our experiences in NLC as we went in March. And as well as you guys supporting us as we went to National League of Cities. So, the main focus of NLC was infrastructure. Our focus was getting out to city council members and to different states that infrastructure is needed in each of the states as we went over bridges and other infrastructure that has been failing and that needs to be rebuilt in the community.
Some of the takeaways that the entire group, the executive council, went and talked about was how to create and deliver an effective elevator pitch, school to prison pipeline, grassroots advocacy tips and tricks, diversity, effects of gentrification, and the drug and opioid epidemic. What really stood out to me was the school to prison pipeline. This essentially was programs not being set in place for students that were making mistakes in their school. And instead of having tolerance in the schools, they would immediately be sent to prison or just sent out of the schools where they wouldn't have the chance to become productive members of society. And not only in other communities, but we see this in our own community as well, where programs need to be put in place so that students who are having a hard time in their schools have more tolerance and they're able to become effective citizens and help in society in their adult lives.
And some other things that happened is we had the opportunity to speak to Representative Labador about some things we've been doing in GA with the organ donation, thanks to Arlie, who now that the bill has become a law for organ donation. And we also got to talk to Senator Risch as well. And we had a lot of senators and political figures speak to us and give great points and tips to us while we were attending NLC. So, another thing is we just wanted to first off, thank you for just passing the PB project. We're so proud of where it's going to go and that you guys passed it. And we're so thankful for the people and the MIACs who spent the time and just were committed to this project.
Next, Do the Right Day was on April 5th, and it was an absolute success. It went really well. For the school ambassadors, we all put it in our announcements for our schools. I'm an at-large ambassador, and at North Star, we put it in the announcements. We gave stickers to every single high school student. Over forty thousand stickers were printed, and I saw every student in my school with one. My principal was super on board with it, as with the other principals that I heard from the other school ambassadors. We went around and we put in note cards in everybody's lockers with messages of kindness, just lifting other people up and giving teachers compliments as well. And they all loved it.
So, one of the things that we invite you to come to for a MIAC event is that on May 5th, we're going to have the Point of Hope Suicide Prevention Run. And Ben's going to pass out some flyers to you guys. And there'll be flyers in the back if anyone else wants to grab any flyers. But the suicide prevention run is in dedication of my sister who took her life when I was a freshman in high school. And we are really focusing on suicide prevention and mental health in high schools for students and people to become more aware of this, just because we know in recently with some high schools, they have lost students to suicide. And we just want people to stand up to this and just be more aware and just encouraging and just accepting to the culture of different people and that they just love upon each other. Do you guys have any questions?
Counsel, I guess I just want to say a couple of things. You know, Do the Right was really established three years ago because of bully behavior and several incidents of suicide that happened in our schools as well as in our community. And the Point of Hope Run as well is carrying that theme on in addressing prevention and education and promoting kindness instead of bully behavior. So, I'm really proud of our MIACs that want to be part of a solution. And this is the second annual run. I know that Colin had almost single-handedly last year put it together at his school. But MIAC eagerly embraced it this year and said, "This fits exactly the theme that we want to expand our time and energy to." So, big kudos to our Mayor's Youth Advisory Council members and being the change you want to see. That's fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Burnt.
I also want to say thank you to you guys and MIAC in general for such a wonderful, putting on such a wonderful event. I wasn't able to be a part of Do the Right Day here at City Hall. My family and I, we did some, I don't want to get so choked up, it's crazy. We did some Do the Right activity that evening. It was fantastic. But you guys inspired me to wear my Do the Right t-shirt today.[730.38][730.38](laughter). So, I'll be wearing my Do the Right t-shirt during our meetings. Thank you. Proudly.
Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavanagh.
Couple of questions. I guess first about the Point of Hope Suicide Prevention Run. I'd love to register, because I'm not very hip when it comes to QR codes. Is there any other way that I can register early without having to use a QR reader that I don't have and I don't work very well with because I'm not that technically savvy?
Yes. First off, it's only two miles, so you're good. You can walk. So, if you're like, "I don't know about running," it's okay. You can walk. But yeah, so, we have a website through Eventbrite, and so I believe you can go on the MIAC page, which will take you to the website itself. But yeah, on there you can get the early bird ticket, which will go until the week of the run.
Okay. Madam Mayor, a couple of follow-ups.
Well, I would also invite Councilmember Palmer to show you how.[794.94][794.94](laughter).
Madam Mayor, I appreciate that. I guess I'm going to challenge all the council members to come out to that and try and beat me in this race. Apparently, I can walk it, but I'll try and do a little better than that. Madam Mayor, additional question, if I may. The public service announcement that you guys shot, any idea when we'll be able to see that? Is that something that is finished and can we get a link? Or is it in the process of being put together? And if it's in the process of being put together, then maybe in a future update, it'd be great for us to see your guys' efforts.
So, Ken Quarter was in charge of the PSA. And so, I know that they shot it. I believe that it's in the making right now. But we can get it to you ASAP through a link or through the next update, if you prefer.
Great. Thanks. Madam Mayor, just a comment, if I can, for counsel. Counsel, I was fortunate enough to attend the GA Subcommittee meeting three weeks ago. And again, I shouldn't be surprised, but I'm always surprised how engaged our high school students are on the issues that are impacting our state. It's something I would encourage you all, if you've got a spare half hour, forty-five minutes, come even just to a Subcommittee meeting, see all the great things that they're doing. You guys continue to just be such a bright light for our community. And I'd also like to share, because I was really excited about this. I know, we all remember where we were last Tuesday, or should I say, last Wednesday morning at 1:30 in the morning. I get home and I get a text message from Zach Eddy, who he and his dad owned the Fast Eddys gas stations, who had sat in on the meeting and earlier had heard you guys talk about your participatory budgeting project. And were so inspired by our youth council that they want to sponsor six of the air and repair stations for MIAC. I mean, it just, it shows how, you know, just you guys coming and talking about all the great things that you're doing on a regular basis is inspiring our community to take action. I just think it's really remarkable. And to echo Councilmember Burnt's comments, we appreciate all you do. You do a great job of making our community look great.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
If you have an iPhone and you open just the camera and just hover over the QR code, a little thing will come down from the top that'll open a link for you.
Madam Mayor, what about Androids?
It's, well...
Madam Mayor, if you own an Android, you should switch to an iPhone.[938.12][938.12](laughter).
Straight up it does. That's amazing.
Does it work?
Yeah, it works.[943.54][943.54](laughter). Sorry.
See, ask and you shall receive. Thank you both for being with us today and for all of your efforts as executive council members on MIAC.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, city council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Kavanagh, we'll follow up with Ken Quarter and find out the exact launch date of the public service announcement, and we'll get that information out to you.
Excellent.
Okay, item 7B is under our 2018 Environmental Excellence Awards. We're thrilled to have Jason here to launch this again. This is something that we have done in the past, and Jason picked this up and got it up and running again. So, thank you for your efforts, Jason.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm happy to be here this afternoon to present the 2018 Environmental Excellence Awards. And after a few years off, we were excited to relaunch the program by asking our community to nominate those individuals, businesses, or organizations that have done something outstanding in their environmental protection field. And we would like to take this opportunity to promote and recognize the three awardees selected by our selection commission for their innovative efforts in environmental sustainability. And with that, I will try to twist this around maybe so we could address the audience. Oh, this way. All right. So, I'll say a few words about each recipient, and then I'll have them come up individually and receive their awards. I would like to begin with our first awardee, United Heritage Insurance. United Heritage Insurance has shown a commitment to reducing their carbon footprint and environmental stewardship by investing in sustainability programs throughout the company, and specifically at their Meridian Headquarters Campus. Some of the highlights of Meridian include the installation of three electric vehicle charging stations, which are capable of charging two vehicles each, the purchase of electric hybrid vehicle fleet. They currently have five electric vehicles charging daily at the Meridian campus, encouraging of carpool and alternative transportation through preferred parking on their campus, and the installation of solar panels on their Building Two, which are capable of producing forty to fifty percent of the building consumption during peak months. That's among other things, like LED lighting retrofits, the increasing of green purchasing, and more recycling. So, we have Rob McCarville and, was it Todd? Okay, and Todd. And Mayor, if you'd like to present their award.
Okay, this is to United Heritage Insurance for our commitment and leadership in sustainability through investment in electric vehicle technology and solar energy at your Meridian campus. We appreciate all your efforts and also appreciate your corporate partnership and leading the way. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, and those in the audience, we thank you for this award. We do take it as part of our vision statement, our strategic plan, that we are sustainable and that we do our part in being more sustainable each and every year. And for all those reasons that Jason read, that we're proud of that. But we want to continue to do that, and we encourage those in the community and other businesses to also take the step forward to provide sustainable operations that fit for them and makes sense for them. But thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Our next award goes to Julie Boenkamp of the Meridian Co-op Gardeners. The Meridian Co-op Gardeners operates the community garden in Kleiner Park, and Julie took over operations as president of the Co-op Gardeners in 2012. And she has steadily grown their program and steered the garden into a more environmentally sustainable operation. Some of the activities at the garden include composting, the planting of pollinator habitats, a no-till demonstration, precision irrigation, and non-chemical weed control. Volunteers logged nearly 200 hours in 2017 to educate and engage the community in growing healthy, fresh, organic produce. The Co-op Garden feeds thirty families in the Co-op and donated more than 7,472 pounds of locally grown, sustainable produce to local food banks. Thanks, Julie.
So, I'm just going to add a couple of more fun facts. If you've ever been out to this community garden, it is unlike any community garden you've ever seen. And the organization and the pure beauty, it yields, high yields, because of the care and attention that each of the families pay to this. I think that this could be a model for all. And in addition to the food to food banks, I will tell you that Julie and her volunteers graced City Hall with bouquets of color that are so appreciated. So, Julie, for leading the continued development of the Co-op Garden and providing sustainable gardening and food production practices, we're thrilled to present you with this award.[1327.65][1327.65](applause).
Madam Mayor, counsel, and the audience, I would just like to say thank you so much. I would like to thank you for supporting what we do and recognizing the fact that as this garden's grown, we've become more sustainable. We're learning each and every year, and that's been a huge thing. Flowers are a huge part of this. The 200 hours that Jason mentioned, those were just 200 volunteer hours from other people in the community, not including the people who work in the garden. So, I think 167 of those hours were the sheriff's detail. But we absolutely love and all of us have heartbeats for feeding people in this community. So, the 7,500 pounds that we donated went to two food banks, and then we fed the thirty families that are a part of this garden. So, we're very excited to have this. This goes not only to me, but the thirty families that are a part of who we are. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.[1385.11][1385.11](applause).
All right. Our next award recipient is Idaho Power. Idaho Power strives to help both residents and businesses use energy as efficiently as possible. They have a multitude of energy efficiency and conservation programs to assist homes and businesses conserve energy and save money. Idaho Power has distributed 5,600 free energy-saving kits to Meridian customers. These kits include LED bulbs and other energy efficiency products and tips. Idaho Power has distributed 1,871 free shade trees to Meridian residents, encouraging the right tree, right location planting of these trees to conserve energy. And they also help fund building and equipment upgrades through energy efficiency rebates and incentives for both homes and customers. Can I have Michelle Glaze please come up?
So, Idaho Power has been a huge partner to the city of Meridian and the residents. So, those of you who have participated in their many conservation programs, we thank you. And to those that have not, please do so. It is very easy, and certainly, we believe that Idaho Power, through their advocacy of these programs, make it even easier. So, for promotion and investment in energy efficiency and conservation programs for Meridian homes and businesses, we're very proud to present this Environmental Excellence Award.[1504.48][1504.48](applause).
On behalf of Idaho Power, thank you for acknowledging our efforts in energy efficiency. This award means a lot to myself and our company. Not only does it recognize our company, but it recognizes the efforts in all of us. Without the support of the city of Meridian, Mayor Tammy, the residents promoting and utilizing these programs, we wouldn't be as successful. Thank you.[1536.22][1536.22](applause).
Again, thank you for all the awardees for coming this afternoon. And we will very likely have a 2019 Environmental Excellence Awards to think about. So, nominations will be accepted towards the end of the year, and we will send notices out, and hopefully, we get some more great nominations from the city of Meridian. Thanks.
Jason, thank you for dusting off this program and reinstitutionalizing it. I think it's really important to recognize those that participate in these efficiency programs, not because they have to, but because they want to. And they want to encourage others by doing the right thing and leading the way. So, we appreciate your efforts. Okay, item 7C is our MDC Annual Report Update. And Dan Basileone was the one that drew the short straw. As a former chair, we appreciate you being here, Dan.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Before I start, as an old teacher, I want to compliment the MIAC representatives who are up here. They are outstanding young men, young students, and it shows that this community is in great hands for the future. What you're doing, Mayor Tammy, with starting MIAC and having youth involved in our community is outstanding. So, I don't know, I think we should, if those boys are here, they should get another round of applause.
Well, Dan, it takes a lot of support by the community and our advisors and all of those that have been involved over the years, so we appreciate your comments.
And our school district, they're doing a great job. I would, before I start, also like to introduce some of our commissioners who are in attendance this evening. Indecent new Mayor DeVird, we have Keith Byrd, Rick Ritter, Rob McCarville, who received one of your awards this evening, and Steve Vlasic, and our administrator, Ashley Squires. So, with that, I'll begin.
They got your back, Dan.
Thank you. Mayor Tammy, Council President Borton, members of the city council, it is my pleasure and privilege to present to you the Meridian Development Corporation's Annual Report for 2017. I believe you have a copy of our handout. The annual and long-term planning and budgeting by the MDC Board of Commissioners is always cognizant of the fact that the lifespan of the MDC Downtown District is only for 24 years. Therefore, all capital projects must be completed before 2026, or the city will have to assume responsibility for all unpaid expenses when the Downtown District sunsets. Therefore, with few exceptions, namely the purchase of 703 and 713 North Main Bank buildings and the construction of the Compass VRT Building, all capital projects have been pay-as-you-go projects. A good example of this conservative budgeting philosophy is the current Pine Avenue Widening Project, where MDC, over the past two years, has encumbered the funds necessary for our lighting and streetscape portions of the project. This budgeting philosophy is very much in line with the city of Meridian's expenditure concept for strategic growth within the city as a whole. As we follow the urban renewal strategic plan that guided the formation of MDC, fiscal responsibility, a family-focused environment, historical relevance, and diverse growth are inherent in all our planning activities. are inherent in all our planning activities. In the coming years, strategic growth will be evident in the development of the Two and a Half Street townhomes, the development of the property currently housing 703 and 713 North Main Street, as well as the rest of the old City Hall block, and the development of the Broadway property east of Main Street with the cooperation of Union Pacific Railroad and ProBuild. We also hope that private developers will see the value in the McFadden property on the corner of Second Street and Broadway as the rest of the city develops around them. Economic vibrancy is also a core principle for MDC. Everything that we do, from capital improvements to support for community activities such as the farmer's market, concerts on Broadway, facade improvement grants, streetscape improvements, support for the historical walking tour and public art, are done to make our downtown economically vibrant for our business community, as well as a source of pride and enjoyment for Meridian families. During the past year, new businesses have started, including Potter's Tea House, Deja Brew, Polly's Bar and Grill, The Vault Smoke Shop, and Coffee and Paint Repeat Interior Decorations. Meridian Cycles now has a permanent home on the corner of Main and Washington. Based on recent tax assessments, property values are increasing. Properties, projects, I'm sorry, such as Two and a Half Street townhomes and the Main and Broadway development will continue to spur economic development in the coming years. Responsive government means government that is accessible and responsive to its citizens. MDC transparency is evident in our twice-monthly public board meetings, as well as community involvement and input at MDC monthly committee meetings. And I might mention that our first April meeting is tomorrow morning at 7:30 in the conference room right here at City Hall. So any of the members of the audience who are here tonight who want to see MDC in action and meet the three commissioners who were not able to be here today, come tomorrow morning. MDC administrator and members are also engaged in Chamber of Commerce and Meridian Downtown Business Association meetings in order to hear firsthand the needs of businesses and citizens. MDC members have participated in forum and focus groups hosted by Mayor Tammy for community input. In addition, our administrator and legal counsel work hand-in-hand with officials from other governmental agencies to develop resolutions passed by the MDC Board of Commissioners. Most importantly, the nine commissioners in our daily lives represent MDC to the community. One of the telling strains of our city is our police and fire services. Meridian, including our downtown area, is among the safest cities in the United States. Our streets are safe and clean, blight is removed when discovered, and safety codes are enforced fairly and consistently. This safe environment makes our downtown a place where families can bring their children and businesses can prosper. Safety is enhanced by MDC emphasis on our historic street lighting projects, which not only contribute to the branded look of our historic downtown, but also serve to make pedestrian safety that much better. We also know that night light deters crime that likes to lurk in shadows. Officer Baker and our code enforcement officers, by the way, we thank Officer Baker and wish him well, do a tremendous job enforcing our parking restrictions so that business customers can park close to where they conduct their businesses, and they also enforce the other city codes that help keep our downtown clean and attractive. Officer Baker, our representative, attends MDC Parking Committee meetings and Downtown Business Association meetings in order to address any concerns as soon as possible through awareness and needed action. This year, MDC partnered with the city to utilize CDBG funds to construct sidewalks on Carlton near Coal Valley School. The sidewalks will increase pedestrian safety, especially for children as they walk to and from Coal Valley and Meridian Elementary Schools. As CDBG funds become available, additional sidewalk improvements will be made that enhance pedestrian safety in our downtown core. We are also pleased to work with Valley Regional Transit and Church of the Harvest to provide on-call bus service for senior citizens and anyone with a disability so that they can safely and easily get around our community. As mentioned in strategic planning, MDC is cognizant of the role that history, art, recreation, and culture play in our community, as well as, as a whole, as well as in our downtown area. Downtown is the civic center of Meridian. Our City Hall is not only a focal point for city government offices, where citizens are greeted by our wonderful volunteers, but it is also a cultural focal point for our community. Initial Point Gallery displays the work of our outstanding local artists, and the Meridian History Museum off the City Hall foyer puts Meridian history at the center of our culture. City Hall Plaza hosts many community events, such as concerts on Broadway and the farmer's market, which MDC enthusiastically supports. The North and South Historic Walking Tours are in the fourth year of providing all Meridian third graders in the West Ada School District, as well as private and charter schools, the opportunity to learn about their city government and the history of Meridian. MDC is proud to be able to provide funds for the Historic Walking Tour field trips, which benefit over 1,000 students each year. Public art is also a priority, whether it is at the entrances to our downtown area, on Main Street, or wrapped around utility boxes. Public art contributes to the overall family-oriented aesthetics of our downtown, especially since the utility box art wraps are the work of West Ada student artists. MDC is also pleased to be working with the Parks and Recreation Department to replace trees as needed in our downtown core. In the coming year, we look forward to the mural that will be painted on the south-facing wall of Zamzo's Mill to greet people as they come north on Main Street. I was glad to see that that's on your agenda for this evening to discuss and hopefully pass, and it will be on our agenda tomorrow at our MDC meeting. Our special thanks to Jim and Callie Zamzo for supporting this welcoming mural on their historic and iconic structure. The Meridian Development Corporation develops projects based on partnerships with many public and private agencies. Our primary partnership was with the city of Meridian itself. City goals are MDC goals, and MDC goals are city goals, as I have attempted to note in this presentation. MDC works closely with many city agencies, including Public Works, Economic Development, Parks and Recreation, City Clerk's Office, City Legal Counsel, the Police Department, and of course, the Mayor's Office. Monthly coordinating meetings between our administrator and our legal counsel with city offices help to keep us mutually informed and aware of any concerns in the development of projects. We are also grateful for our relationships with West Ada School District, Ada County Highway District, Valley Regional Transit, Meridian Chamber of Commerce, Meridian Downtown Business Association, Meridian Arts Commission, Meridian Historical Commission, and the many individual citizens who contribute to the planning and implementation of MDC projects. In addition to our Downtown Urban Renewal Agency, MDC is administering the Ten Mile Crossing URA to encourage economic development in the southwest corner of our city. Companies such as Ameribin, Brighton, Herex Engineers, and Palosity are building or occupying facilities in the area. The development is designed to be mixed-use with residential, entertainment, and businesses. Ten Mile is an example of strategic growth involving an MDC, city, and private development partnership. Special recognition should be given to Brighton Corporation, its leadership and investment in the Ten Mile project has been outstanding. Finally, I would be remiss in not thanking the members of the MDC Board of Commissioners for their time and effort on behalf of our city and downtown in particular. Thanks to Dave Winder, Nathan Mueller, Keith Byrd, Tammy DeVere, Rick Ritter, Rob McCarville, Steve Vlasic, and Diane Bevan for serving as volunteer members of the MDC Board, and none of our many projects could be completed without the outstanding work of our administrator, Ashley Squires, and legal counsel, Todd Lakey. We are all part of a great city, which proves daily that together we do make a difference. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Basileone. Questions from Council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Not a question, just, I guess, a statement. In my time that I've been here on Council, one thing that I've continued to fight against is that at any point we ever, we maintain the, I guess, the policy of the city never going into debt, and understanding that MDC is in debt. As you anticipate paying $41,000 in taxpayer dollars in interest between now and the conclusion of that debt, I would just ask that you find a way to pay it off faster and avoid paying as much as possible in taxpayer dollars and interest.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Councilman Palmer. We agree with you. In fact, we've had discussions on what, which is the most cost-effective way to handle that debt, whether to pay it off over the course of its existence at the interest rate that was agreed upon, or to pay it off faster so that the interest could be mitigated in some way. And so that is ongoing. That particular debt was established a number of years ago, in fact, it was before I was on this board seven years ago, and it was done at a time when there were limited funds in the urban renewal district, because as you know, the base year of 2002 was the starting year. So the funds that have accrued, the tax increment funds that have accrued, have been since that year, what has been over and above that year. And in the first year, the growth was slow, and of course, then in 2008, we had a big downturn. So we didn't have the kind of income coming into the district that we anticipated. And so the goal is to pay it off, and it definitely will be paid off before the district sunsets, but possibly paying it off sooner, as you indicated, is a possible goal.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Any other questions?
Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much, and thank you to all the board for joining us. We'll see you in the morning.
And could I just make one quick mention?
Yes, Dan.
You mentioned that it was my privilege to serve as chairperson for the last year and a half, but the reins of the chairpersonship is being turned over to Dave Winder for the coming year, Nathan Mueller as vice chair, and Steve Vlasic, who's in the audience, will be secretary treasurer. So we're in great hands for leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, under action items, our first item, under item 8A, is regarding the Meridian Mill mural.
Yep, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, Rick, I didn't mean to skip you. Although you have a lovely report, so.
I thought maybe you were getting up with it.
No.
So did you get a chance to circulate the report? Mr. Clark?
Yes, we do have it in front of us.
Madam Mayor, Council members, so this is the quarterly report for January through March of 2018. I'll start with, there are 11 current tenants, and with each of those tenants, you can see I've reported the folks that are employed on premises, total 26, and the people that are employed by those companies that are not in residence here in Meridian, and in some cases, not even in Idaho or the United States. I've also given you the report on the members of the, those that pay monthly membership fee for the open space. On the updates, sort of a follow-up from last month, because, I told you, they were going to move in Crash 11, they have now moved and they're done on Franklin between Eagle and Locust Grove. I do have one open office, which I expect, when I tell you here in just a second about the waiting list that I've got, that that office probably won't be open very long, and will be back to full again. So things are looking good on that part. On the second page, you'll see the waiting list for office space, a software development company, virtual reality company, a company that does SAS software for funeral homes, and another one for insurance software. And just earlier today, I had a gal call and talk about the formation of a private school, she's looking for a place to sort of work on setting that up, and her hope is to have a private school somewhere in, in or near downtown. So that's an interesting idea. Events and meetings, you'll see what we had monthly, for a total of 151 meetings during the quarter. You'll see a list of those that were the biggest users during those events and meetings, and then below that, you'll see the financials for January, February, and March, and I would stand for questions. Oh, and I did give you a calendar that shows you the, everything that took place.
Thank you, Rick. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Not so much a question, just a request, Rick.
Sure.
If you could get this to the clerk when they set out our agendas, it'd be beneficial so we have the chance to review it before we come sit down to the city council meeting, just in the future it'd be preferred.
He dinged me, and I was just behind schedule, and I admitted that to him. Thank you.
So the attempt was made, thank you.
I don't doubt the attempt was made. We have a great clerk.
Any further questions for Rick? Thank you, and it's looking pretty nice down there.
Thank you, ma'am. You were a little astonished by the green wall, though.
I was. It was very noticeable.
Thank you. See you in the next quarter.
Okay, now we'll move to item 8A. So excited.
Madam Mayor, members of Council, item 8A is approval of the final design for the proposed Meridian Mill mural, and then the subsequent items just depend on approval of these in order. Sector 17 provided a colorized version of the mural, which was included in your meeting packet. MAC met on, the Meridian Arts Commission met on March 21st and approved the design, and then authorized two of their commissioners, Bonnie and Jay, to work with the artists and the Zamzos to verify colorization. Zamzos requested this kind of digital mock-up to get a better visual on color, because they wanted photorealistic color versus an initial proposal for kind of an overlay monochromatic design with the MDC colors. So the image before you.
Is there a chance we can get it put up on the screen?
Or do you want this, CJ? We did take some of Council's comments to the Zamzos and to the artists, and Zamzos, we, Councilman Cavanagh's suggestion for adding a child, the Zamzos kind of discussed how the farmer in the image was supposed to represent their grandfather, and that he probably wouldn't have a kid running around while he was working, so they kind of opted to have it just as this standalone farmer. One kind of variation, slight change from this farmer depicted here, was that he'd be standing more upright versus hunched over. But this, as it stands today with the cow and the farmer and the dog, and this kind of layout, is what was approved. So with your guys' approval tonight, we would move forward with that final payment for the design concept, and then with the next two items on the agenda. So those MDC colors from their branding components that are represented in the banners throughout downtown are what's represented in that top portion, so it would really be, you're calling it monochromatic in the sense that like that big yellow streak would be highlights and lowlights of that yellow color, and that's kind of the way to tie in the downtown branding with a design that keeps it more agricultural and more realistic in that bottom half.
Okay, Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I don't like the stripes. I don't get it. I'm not an art guy, though, but I just look at it, and that's all that sticks out to me, is like, what are these stripes in the sky? me, is like, what are these stripes in the sky? Reading rainbow. I don't know. That's my only comment.
Reading rainbow. Any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Because I know that I will be asked by the public. I don't love this either. I don't like the color scheme along the top. I was bummed they didn't want to incorporate kids. I'm not going to oppose approving this, but I just, people ask, I'm going to tell them the same thing that I said here today.
Ms. Mylum.
Hillary, I know that this has been a difficult process, and how much work has gone into it, and it's, I think the problem is so many different, yeah, too many cooks in the kitchen, and, you know, you end up having to compromise in some ways. I do like this rendering better than some previous versions, but I, as well, I don't love it. I think it'll look nice. I do think that the coloring in the sky, even though it's, has a purpose to tie in, it just looks like stripes in the sky. And if you had a little purple, maybe then it would look more like a rainbow.
Purple.
It's purple. Anyway, that's my two cents. But I understand how it caught here, and I do think it has come a long ways, and it is, it is pretty. It'll look better than it looks right now, and so it adds art to downtown, so I like that. Madam Mayor, do I need to do all of these separately? Can I just move to approve item eight A?
I think you can move to approve item eight A.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move to approve item eight A.
Have motion in a second, any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Just as a reminder, how much, how much of tax dollars is, is this, it was all not tax dollars, right?
The total cost of the mural is sixteen thousand dollars, and that's sponsored through the Meridian Development Corporation.
Madam Mayor, and what funds are they using? Is it their normal revenues, or do they get revenues from something else to go towards this?
I believe it is their normal revenues. It was included in their budgeted items for this last fiscal year.
So all of it's tax dollars?
So is their TIF, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Well, and I appreciate that you have gone through an extensive process, and that the art in front of council tonight is, or today, is really through the input and preferences of the Zanzo family. I kind of liked it in black and white better than in color. I would agree with the various comments made. It is unfortunate, but it is what it is.
That's by committee.
Any further comment?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Hillary, just, I don't know if we've discussed this, if we have, my apologies. How long do we anticipate this mural will last before it would need to be redone or replaced?
The mural lifespan is approximately ten years before it gets too faded, or you've got to do more, larger maintenance on it.
Thank you.
Hillary, I think that's a great question, is not just the maintenance, but who will maintain it?
So the easement agreement with the Zanzos covers the fact that the city could provide any maintenance if needed for the length of that lifetime, so that tenure lifespan. I think if there were any maintenance issues needed in relationship to the mural, the Arts Commission would likely consider using MAPS funds, since it's going back towards public art, to help cover the cost of any maintenance needed.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
It doesn't sound like anyone's thrilled about it, and this is going to be kind of a major, welcome to Meridian, welcome to our downtown, so, I mean, the fact that it is tax dollars being used for it, to build and maintain, if it was privately funded, Zanzos was paying for it, I'd say, you put whatever you want on the side of your building, where it's tax dollars going towards it, and none of us really like it, why on earth would we approve it?
Madam Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Are you not happy with the color specifically, or are you not happy with the design concept?
Madam Mayor, myself, I, I think this would look pretty cool if it was just blue sky with white clouds. The whole stripes in the sky thing to, to brand MDC is what I guess I'm understanding the point of them is. I think it looks goofy as heck. The blue section looks cool, but the red and the yellow, I'm like, I don't understand it. Again, I'm not an art guy, though, but.
Okay.
You know, and having not been part of the conversation at the Arts Commission, or with the Zanzo family, I know they did not want to get into the abstract, or they wanted to stay with the realism, and, and I don't know if the, the sky is a compromise to make it artistic. What is behind the sky? Just, just want to.
So the artists were trying to still incorporate the MDC colors, because we originally kind of charged them with trying to find a way to make the mural not stand apart from the existing kind of beautification and branding efforts going on in downtown Meridian. I don't think that if city council wanted to approve this design with only a blue sky and not with the stripes, I don't think that MDC would stand in the way of that decision, or the Arts Commission, or the artists, or the Zanzos. But I could go to them before, if you'd prefer that.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Maybe instead of the striped sky, we could put an MDC logo somewhere on there.
And they might not even require that. I think it was a good faith effort to tie in to existing imagery.
Even though MDC had a color scheme.
Well, Mr. Palmer.
Well, I just, MDC is going to cease to exist in eight years? So as much as I'd love to help the brand, I don't want to help a brand, but they're going to cease to exist, they will be gone before this needs maintenance.
That was quotable. Yeah. Mr., yeah, Mr. Basalum, perhaps maybe you can comment? Because frankly, I don't recall.
I have to agree, I like the blue sky, too, and this is the first I've seen this actual design, because it's been in process, and it isn't, it's coming before us tomorrow, and I think that all of your concerns about the sky should be a part of that discussion tomorrow as well. So I'm just one commissioner on that board, but I would have to agree, I like the blue sky with the clouds, so. And as far as an MDC logo on it, no, there's no MDC logo. I mean, it's branding for downtown, not for MDC. Yeah.
Thank you, Dan, for your answer or comments. Ms. Low Roberts.
Madam Mayor, and that was what I was going to bring to light, is I don't think we're trying to brand MDC downtown, and so if coloring is really necessary, I'd rather see a border or something that ties it in, and get the stripes out of the sky, but if they really feel like it needs tied in with the downtown, maybe a border or something that highlights the entire picture, instead of trying to create the abstract stripes in the sky. I would also like to see the cow a little smaller.
A little bigger.
Can live with the cow, though.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I think that cow needs a name. He's going to be famous.
Frank.
No, I don't think so. We don't want to downgrade the look of the cow.
Macy.
I like, I like the cow, I think it's great.
We've got mush on the table.
You don't want to slander the cow.
I like it in black and white.
Madam Mayor.
How's Betty?
The sky. Yes.
Madam Mayor, it sounds like there might be consensus for a motion to approve this, subject to the change of the sky to becoming all blue.
It's kind of an amended.
Kind of what I'm hearing.
Madam Mayor. Yes, I'm going to amend the, amend the motion to approve it with all blue and clouds in the sky. And if, I don't know if we should add something to the sense of a border with the colors, or just, no. Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Ayes.
Councilmember Low Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. Well, five ayes and ayes both. It passes.
The record will show that we affirm it.
So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Do you want me to continue with the other items?
Sure, what else do you need?
Eight B, eight C, the easement agreement?
What?
Are we?
Oh, was that all three?
Oh, it's all of it, great.
Yep.
No discussion, great, thank you.
It's like, there's a B? Okay, under department reports, we'll call up our CFO for his annual report, for all things finance, where everybody counts. Mr. Palmer.
I just want to thank Todd for coming in on his day off to talk to us.
I know.
Commitment, right?
Or should be.
I appreciate you not making fun of my jeans, so I appreciate that fact. Thank you. I don't have any artwork or any awards to offer you guys or any pictures yet, but I do have the support services departments to present to you. I will present the finance department. David T. will represent the IT department, and then CJ will present the clerks department for you guys tonight. So with tonight for the finance department, this is our annual strategic update to you guys. This is what we'll go over. We're going to go over who we are in the department, introduce you to the department as it stands, so we're going to quickly go over what we do for you and the citizen's citizens. We're going to offer you our expectations of what we believe we need to deliver to you, show you some achievements that we've accomplished since we've last spoke to you, deliver to you our goals for the next twelve months, and discuss our one strategic objective that we have in the strategic plan, and then we'll stand for any questions. So with that, before I get the team list up here, again, I get the honor to introduce and talk about the finance department. I can tell you that you have nineteen proudful, strong individuals, very professional in what they do. Every day, we take pride in what we do for you as a finance department. We know who our customers are, and our goal is to deliver on an annual basis to you a clean audit. A clean audit is very important to us. Again, that tells us, tells you, and tells the citizens, what you have in place is working. And with that, again, I just want to say, it's my honor to introduce the nineteen that represent your finance department. Before we get to the nineteen, there's three I want to introduce to you. Since we've last talked, we've added three team members to our staff. You guys provided us funding to hire three new individuals in fiscal year eighteen, and we appreciate that very much. So first off, I'd like to introduce you to Eunice Sotero. She is our administrative assistant, she's going to be the jack-of-all-trades. She's going to represent all four divisions that you have on your screen. She's going to work with the accounting division, the budget division, the purchasing division, and utility billing division. We're going to use her as a resource and allocate her resource in the time of need. So we have, each division kind of has a peak and a valley, so we're going to make sure we allocate the resource to the peaks of each division. The next person that.
Welcome.
Thank you. The next person that you allowed us to, or offered us to hire was our lead account clerk, Amanda Plitt. She is in charge of our, kind of our front-facing utility billing team, so when you enter the new lobby, I'm going to get to that, but again, when you enter the new lobby down there, she's kind of running the show up there. She has four representatives that work for her. So she's going to be in charge of our customer service, front-facing individuals. Again, she has a big task, she has thirty-four thousand customers she has to manage, mostly, you know, thirty-four thousand good customers. We have one or two that aren't so great sometimes, but again, she's in charge of that, and again, thank you for allowing us to have the funding to hire her.
Welcome, Amanda.
And then, not last, but last but not least, our third individual that you provided us was a financial analyst, Brad Purser.
Well, and Brad's already broke all council in, so.
Perfect, perfect, you know who he is, awesome. Again, he's going to be in charge of our cost of government priority-based budgeting program for the next many years. He's joining Jenny's team in the budget analytics team. He's going to be helping out with budget and projects like that. So again, I just want to take the opportunity to introduce you to our three individuals that you offered us as new hires, and again, appreciate it for joining us. With that, this is your finance team, nineteen strong. Again, we take pride in everything we do for you, and with that, kind of show you what we do for you. This is just a high-level picture of the few things that we offer you, the mayor, you the council, our fellow staff members, citizens, community partners. Again, what we do, we know we have to do it at a professional level. What we do, we know we have to deliver a clean audit for you to report back to the citizens every single year. We know that we have many customers. The customers ask easy questions, they ask dynamic, difficult questions. The questions are never the same, but again, I can tell you that you have a team that is ready to respond and answer in a professional and timely manner. I'm going to kind of go over some of the quick items of what we represent, again, as you heard, Amanda and Carrie and the fellow utility billing team, you have thirty-four thousand customers now. Again, the city's growing every day. I think we're adding about twenty-something people, or twenty people every day to the city, based on our population growth. The utility billing team is there to help manage those new customers. Again, a lot of growth. You see the Platts, you approve the Platts, we're growing in the south, the north, the west. They're going to be there to help you manage those new customers that we add to the city every day. So our goal is to deliver the professional customer service they expect of us, not only to them, but also to our fellow city staff members. Purchasing, purchasing is a staff of two, it's been that way since two thousand and six. They are in charge of keeping our procurement purchases in a solid state, they make sure that we're following all the laws by the state and the city. I will plant a little seed, again, we haven't added anybody in that department since two thousand and six. We've added one hundred and ninety-seven employees since then. Each one of those employees has a procurement ability. So again, we see the demands on our side of the fence, but with that, in the upcoming budget proposal, we're going to be presenting the mayor with a request for some software. Again, we're hoping that the software allow us to be more transparent, have a better communication tool between the purchasing division and our customers, both internal and external with our vendors, and we're hoping that the software is going to lead to us to process improvements, so that we can maybe mitigate adding any FTEs to our procurement division. We want to see if we can maximize what we have with process improvements, with maybe a little bit of software, and resource allocations before we add any FTEs to our purchasing division. It's been since two thousand and six, but again, we think we would like the opportunity to challenge ourselves before we ask you for any FTEs. So again, the mayor will receive the budget enhancement for a software request for procurement. Many of the boxes here are for the accounting division, which is ran, which is overseen by Rita. Rita is a rock, she's been here longest out of all of us, she's kept the city going where it's, where it needs to be, she's kept us in compliance, she runs the department in a very professional manner. Again, the mayor has seen the years and years of clean audits that she has led the city in, very thankful for her. Again, not looking forward to her retirement in about four years, but again, we will manage that situation when we get there. But again, Rita is in charge of our accounting division, she oversees accounts payable, payroll, all of our compliance, controls, and procedures, and huge, huge task, again, very thankful for what she does. Again, she oversees payroll, which is a. Again, she oversees payroll, which is managed by one person. We've only had one person in the city. We still only have one person, Barb Nielsen. She continues to manage the payroll department by herself. We continue to look at process improvements. We continue to look at technology so that we don't come standing, so we don't stand in front of you asking for new FTEs. Again, we're going to continue to push the envelope, push our resources, but at some point in time, I will plant the seed. Now, we will need to hire another FTE in payroll. Again, we're up to 458 FTEs. At some point in time, she will go completely crazy, and I don't want to lose her to that, and we will ask you for an FTE at some point in time. On the other side of the fence is accounts payable. Rita oversees the accounts payable division with Amy Rose is our current manager. Again, one staff member that processes all your accounts payable. She does have about 12 team members throughout the city that assist her, but again, we want to try to keep it to one. Even though we're growing every day, we're going to continue to look at processes, improvements, and technology. At some point in time, I'm going to plant the seed again, we will need to hire another accounts payable if we continue to grow at the rate that we are. And then, again, not last, but not, not least, again, Jenny oversees the budget vision. She's going to be working with you guys extensively over the next four months. She orchestrates the entire budget. Her and Brad will manage the budget for you, facilitate it for you, and deliver to you a balanced budget in May, and then we, as a team, will deliver a balanced budget to the citizens in August. So that's what we do in a nutshell. Again, a few more other items that we provide here and there. We do law rate modeling. We work with the public works team to make sure we have the proper rates in place for the citizens. We do some analytical work for the school resource officer agreements with the agreement with the school district. We do some analysis for vehicle maintenance and liquor revenue. And then we also look at discrepancies with our finances, and then always the utility billings, working with the customers to make sure the 34,000 customers receive proper billings and accurate billings. So all that good stuff, again, a lot, a lot that we do for you guys. But at the end of the day, our primary goal is to deliver customer service to you at the highest level that we can. We take pride in what we do. We're committed to doing it. It's not going to be a, let's just do customer service one year and stop. It's going to be a continual improvement process for us. We believe in delivering to you guys our best customer service that we can. That's our job. That's our responsibility. That's what you expect of us. If we can deliver to you a clean audit every year, that's our goal. I think you can say that we are delivering that sound customer service in a professional manner. Again, the annual audit is something we are very proud of. We put a lot of time into it. We ask your, all your other department staff members to put a ton of time in it as well. But again, it is the finance department's job to provide the help, the advice, the support, the compliance, the leadership that you've asked us to do for your financials. This year, you have a budget of $154 million, so in theory, you can say we have 154 million reasons why we need to make sure we're doing it right for you guys. Some of the goals and achievements that we've accomplished since we've last spoke, so kind of a budget, a year in review for you. Again, we spoke about the three employees that you provided us. We've successfully hired them, and we, again, thank you very much for that. Again, customer service, we hope that you've seen some customer service improvements from our department. Again, it's not going to be the final day, but it's going to always be there. Front office remodel. If you haven't stopped by, stop by. We're about 98% done. It looks good. Rita, Carrie, and the team over there have developed an awesome remodel for the department. I think you guys will like it. Again, so far, we're adjusting to it, but I think in the long run, it will prove the city beneficial, or benefit on how we laid it out for the growing community and where we're going. Cost of government, you'll hear more and more and more and more and more about that over the next two years. Brad's going to lead that. And then, just subtle statement that, again, mayor, you had a clean audit. So, again, we're very proud of that. Where we're going for the next 12 months? You've heard it, you're going to continue to hear it. We want the finance department to have the top-notch customer service. The mayor said it earlier. Again, it's corny, not corny, but we really do want you and every other customer to know that you can count on us, and that's our ultimate goal. If we can't have our customers know that, then we're not doing our job. So you're going to continue to see us look at that, continue to improve on things, listen, take the criticism and adjust. The mayor offered a great opportunity to her management's team, her leadership team, for Peak Academy training. It was awesome. We learned a lot. We're going to implement the, what we learned into the finance department, try to find some ways, try to improve our processes before we start asking for FTEs and things like that. So we're going to take it to heart and apply some of the rules over the next 24 months on everything that we do at the department. City policies, we're now over 100,000 people. The city's grown, the city's getting bigger. We need to revamp and relook at our policies. So you're going to have a, a new set of policies that we're going to promote to you, maybe this calendar year. We're still working on them, but we want to bring them up to today's 2018, 2019 needs. So you'll hear that from us. With that, as we establish policies, we're going to document every single process that we do. We're going to use the technology to make sure that we always have the processes in place. The team is going to look at cross-training multiple people, so we have a, a number of redundancy issues or controls in place. So if something does happen to a team member, you can feel safe that your finances will be managed professionally and correctly. The seed I provided you, which was procurement bid software, again, we are going to promote that to you. Hopefully, we can move forward with that, but we think that's going to be a great tool and benefit to the procurement and city. With that, update to the policy of purchasing, some state changes, we're going to make sure we get that up to date. And then, we're going to look at developing a handbook to make it easier for our customers to know what to do when a contract is put in their desk. It's very complicated. The mayor, during our peak training, went through the, one simple task of outlining a process for task orders. It was 20-something steps or something like that. So there's a lot to do. We need to provide you a handbook so that you guys know what to expect when you enter into an agreement or a contract. Again, I mentioned we are responsible. We're the lead of one strategic plan objective. The mayor and you have been working on the strategic plan, appreciate that. With that, we have one item within the focus area three, responsive government, under strategic goal letter E, and that's our priority-based budgeting cost of government exercise. As we mentioned to you, we got the resource in Brad to lead this endeavor. He's going to be the champion of this. We actually have the consultants here on April 18th, 19th, and 20th. So we already have three meetings set up to start this. The pilot projects are ready to go. The pilot departments are ready to go. So again, we're going to have a, a many updates to you over the next 24 months, and again, we're looking forward to it. I think it's going to provide you guys a lot of insight on what the city provides and how much it costs for every activity that we provide you. Again, it's going to be good lessons learned here. And with that, as always, I stand for any questions regarding the presentation.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions from council? Thank you, very thorough.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Dave T. is up next with information technology.
Madam Mayor, members of the councils. Thanks for having me here today.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes. So today, I'm going to give you our annual update for the IT department. Going to try to keep it a little more brief since you saw us here just four months ago, so.
Technology.
It is technology. That's okay. It's not perfect. If it were, I wouldn't be employed. So, the IT team, here are some of the services that we provide to our customers, which are mostly internal customers, all the city employees and other departments. We have our service desk team, and I'll go into a little bit more detail in each of these groups. We have our software engineering team. We have our GIS services, our infrastructure services, and our business analysis and project management. So, moving on. Thank you, Caleb. This is our service desk team. We have a couple interns. Jared Day is one of our support interns. Nathan Montgomery is our graphics intern, who handles a lot of the graphic design requests that we get. Stephanie Beck is our asset management coordinator. She handles some of our administrative tasks in the department, but also takes care of software acquisitions for all departments in the city and other technology acquisitions for the city, and also assists with asset management of all those different assets. Heather McDonald is a new ac, new hire that was started here in December, I think two weeks after I came to talk to you guys last. So, she is here in the audience with us. So she is a new addition to our team. She's our support technician, so when people call in, she's the first person that usually answers their calls. Great to have her on board.
Welcome, Heather.
Ryan Dusimeri is one of our support specialists, as is Cliff Kessinger, and they are really the tier two that helps with various things out in the field, including supporting MDTs, fire police in the field, inspectors, things like that. And then Paul Maselli is our service desk manager. If you recall, he was promoted to that position here this October, which was a position that we added for FY18, and has been a fantastic fit. So, moving on to the next. Oh, you did? Thank you.
Yeah, and Dave, I don't know if you have it in your presentation, but council, you got your dashboards today, and you'll see actually how busy that, that team is in responding to calls and issues as they arise, so great job from our service team.
Service desk team has been fantastic, and yes, we, we have been very busy. So, moving on, we have our software engineering and GIS teams. I'll just briefly touch on a few of the folks in those respective roles. Nick Ferris is one of our software engineers, along with Dwayne Nell and Ryan Schaefer. They're the team that actually develops new software for the city. So, when we aren't buying something off the shelf, and we aren't taking something from somebody else and modifying it, they're the ones that actually will write the software for us. They also get the added bonus of dealing with some of the other software that we have and working on integrations and whatnot. Dwayne and Ryan spend a lot of time supporting Exella, our land development system. Catherine Roebuck is our web developer, and she has been working on transitioning the website over to way better, faster, streamlined version of the website. So, you'll probably notice her work if you go to areas of the website, it's lightning quick compared to what it used to be, and it's also a lot more friendly with ADA compliance requirements and search engines and whatnot, which is fantastic.
Well, and I think people will say on the backside, it's much easier to keep updated and that sort of thing.
Absolutely. And then Mike Tanner is our software engineering manager over our software engineers and our GIS team. And if you talk to police, you'll probably hear that Mike is a genius, so. And he, he is fantastic.
I think they all are.
They are, they really are. Matt Hoffman is our GIS analyst and deals with many of the GIS requests that we get from other departments, whether that's map requests or other analysis needs. Been doing quite a bit of work for FIRE recently on FIRE response times and things like that. Doug Green is our GIS developer, and he kind of takes GIS and software engineering and marries them together to create applications that are GIS-centric. So, a big one that we've worked over, on over the last few years is our AVL dashboard so that we can track vehicles and where, where vehicles are at real time, which is pretty cool.
Dave, I hate to keep interrupting you, but-
No, that's fine.
In the GIS, they were integral last year in our Snowmageddon and really helped prepare us to, fortunately, we didn't need to, but we were so much better prepared this year because of a lot of their, their work, but also their counsel.
Absolutely. Yep. We applaud them, so they do a fantastic job. Our infrastructure and team and our systems analysis and project management individual, Eli Daniels, our network administrator, handles all the backend network infrastructure, which includes-
The thinker.
Yes, the thinker. You can see there in his picture. Includes our fiber, our wireless, all the connectivity for every piece of equipment that you have in front of you in some form or fashion, includes a network connection. Jamie is our, Jamie Bean is our systems administrator, and he handles the server and storage side and virtualization, so pretty much every application that we have in some form or fashion is on a backend on a server. So, that's his role. Kristy Vigil is our systems analyst slash project manager, and that's what she does, so business systems analysis and project management. Trying to think, she'll be a vital component of upcoming projects with community development software needs, so that'll be interesting to see how that all plays out. Be good. And then, yeah, myself, and guess I kind of run things up there. So this is just kind of our org chart, so you can kind of see it, how it all plays out. Not super interesting, but in case you're interested. Wanted to highlight some of our accomplishments from this year, FY18. Since I was here a few years ago, I tried to keep it within the last four months and brief, so I don't want to get into too much detail about the technical things that we did. But we were given funding this year for a server and SAN replacements, and that work has taken place, and it's complete. We're on the new infrastructure, and it's fantastic. One area that it's really helped us out with is our DR plan, which I'll be talking about a little bit more as far as our strategic plan and objective for 3C3. So, that's definitely helped with that part of it. As part of the servers and SAN replacement, we did some data center switches that were replaced up in this, on the third floor here at City Hall, and that's part of a multi-phase project that you'll see more to come in the next year. Our DR plan, I will give you a little bit more detail on that in a minute. It's one of our strategic objectives that we just wrapped up. We worked on an ARC GIS upgrade that was a requirement due to some of our new hardware and new software that wasn't compatible with the old versions, so that was fantastic. And that, that was actually a really good project to highlight some of the teamwork that we had in our own department between our service desk and GIS teams. They worked really well together, hand in hand, to try to figure out what the best course of action was, but also working with some of our other power users throughout the city that rely on GIS to get their jobs done, including our public works department and community development departments. So they were very integral in helping us figure out what is the best course of action, what direction do we need to go to make this functional for everyone moving forward. It was a great team effort, so. And then, we've spent quite a bit of time working with ACHD on fiber and conduit projects to get connectivity to some facilities that have been a big concern, including the new dispatch center here in town, and then the Home Court acquisition that happened this last year. So, those are works in progress, and we'll be wrapping up Home Court this summer, and Dispatch will probably be wrapping up next budget year. So, strategic objective 3C3 is to develop technological and communication plans for the city so that we can remain responsive, responsive government in the event of some disaster or critical event happening here at the city. And so, we had a few tactics related to that, well, all, all the tactics related to that. The objective, or some of the important events that took place from that, that we accomplished over the last many months, we updated our DR and continuity plan so that we can better respond to those situations and be prepared. We met with departments to prioritize their needs so that when we do have an issue happening, we know where to start as far as bringing services back up so that we're not just scratching our heads trying to figure out, okay, where do we start? Or trying to do everything at once, which in the end can be quite disastrous. So, that was a really good exercise. Casey Emery in the mayor's office developed an outward-facing communication plan. And then, we also developed a vendor assistance plan so that we know what contacts we have available to us to reach out in the event that we need services or equipment to move forward with in the event something happened to ours. So... And then, these are some of the performance measures that we'll be keeping in mind as we move forward. We're going to be updating this pan, plan annually rather than doing it once and assuming it's going to continue to work. Obviously, technology changes, business need changes, and we need to make sure that this plan continues to meet those needs. So, we'll be updating it annually, we'll be testing it annually. That's something that we've been doing a pretty good job with. Every year, we, we schedule some time so that we can take many- Every year we, we schedule some time so that we can take many systems down and make sure that our disaster recovery solutions are up and operational. We're going to continue to do that. But one of the things that's new to that is that we're going to, and there's a couple of acronyms in here that I won't get into, but we're basically going to measure how we're meeting the needs from the business or from the departments. So recovery, RTA is recovery time objective or actual. So what we're actually able to deliver versus what the department requested. And then have a dialogue with them about any things that, gaps that we identify and figure out, well, if we do have a gap, do we address that gap or is that something that we're okay with living with? And communicating that to our citizens when we do have a disaster happen. So I always tell, as we met with departments, I'd always tell them that, you know, if they want services backup in three seconds, anything's possible. It just comes down to money and whether or not really that's the best thing for our citizens. So we feel pretty comfortable with where we're at with our disaster recovery plan. But if we do identify gaps through this exercise annually, then we'll figure out how we want to address those with each, with the departments. So a few projects that we have in progress, I'm just going to highlight a handful of them since we have a lot of, a lot of things on the, in the fires, so to speak. We are working on upgrading server operating systems, which is really rebuilding a bunch of servers. It's a lot of work, very labor intensive, but we have a great crew working on it from our infrastructure team. We are working on computer replacements as usual. That's a annual exercise we go through. This year, we were definitely a little delayed due to staff changes and departures. So we had to, we had to take a step back and slow down on those before we could fully roll them out just so that we could get new staff members up to speed. And we have since gotten them up to speed and have been rolling out new computers to the various departments throughout the city. I think we're around fifty-five to sixty percent complete now. So it's moved on quite nicely. We are still working on the comprehensive financial plan software with, in conjunction with finance, and that's moving on quite nicely. It's one of our larger projects in software engineering. We are looking at ARC GIS Enterprise, which is a web-based platform for GIS mapping. So far, it's looking really promising and we're actually thinking that there's a possibility that we will be reducing some of the costs that we pay to this particular company with the replacement or with this software replacing some other pieces of software in the future, which is great. And then I mentioned the connectivity to Home Court. That's an active project that we're working on right now. It's in progress with a developer working on a construction plan for a part of that project. So it's moving along really nicely. A few upcoming projects that I wanted to highlight. The first two are CFP items. We have network replacements coming up this next budget year and that's going to be on the replacement list that you'll see coming up as part of the budget process. We have a Microsoft Office upgrade as well. And I realize I probably should have put Microsoft on there now, so I apologize for that because we're not upgrading our offices. We have our phone system, ShoreTel, which was bought out by another company here recently that we'll be upgrading soon just so we can maintain, maintain the functionality that we have out of the phone system. And on a positive note, it sounds like they are going to maintain that platform and keep it moving forward. So we don't anticipate replacing outright, replacing that in the near future like we thought was a possibility here six months ago. So that was good news. We are going to be working with community development on electronic plan review project, which will probably be a software acquisition. I'm sure you've all heard that that will be upcoming. And then working more on the redundant connectivity to the new dispatch center. So we did an amendment here a few months ago that was phase one. We'll have phase two coming up in FY19 presented as you two, as an enhancement during the budget process. So just kind of a heads up of things to come. Obviously, there's many, many more things, but wanted to highlight a few for you. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Dave. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavan.
Not a question because as I referenced earlier, I'm not tech savvy. More just a comment. And Dave, just to you and your team, I have just seen progressively over the past five years, a constant improvement in the level of service that you provide to our employees and the council. I know that you have a lot of demands in the day-to-day operations and then having to respond to many employees with their immediate fires. I just think that you've done a really great job, you and your team, really addressing that and improving that level of service. I just want to say thanks and that it hasn't gone unnoticed.
Thank you, Councilmember Cavan. We do strive to provide the best customer service that we can to our employees. That is our first priority and that's what we're here for, is to make their lives easier and, you know, the jobs that they're doing for all of our citizens around the city, so.
Thank you. Mr. Burnt.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It's fantastic. Also, thank you for helping me, I'm the new guy. And so thank you for all this dumb tech questions I asked you as well and your immediate response. I don't know if it was you or your team, but thank you so much for your help.
You're absolutely welcome, Councilmember Burnt.
And that's what they are. They're, they're a team and we appreciate all of you being here and, and what you do for our customers. Most of them, yes, internal, but internally grateful. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Paul's beard looks great, too. On point.
Jeez. Is it November?
He's preparing for November. Imagine what that thing's going to look like in November. Attaboy.
There you go. Okay, next item, nine C is under City Clerk's office.
I'm trying, Councilmember Cavan. Mr. President, members of the council, it's good to be back with you. I will, just like Dave, be a little bit shorter today. I was in front of you just like he was in December. So six of you have seen probably ninety to ninety-five percent of this presentation. But for Councilmember Burnt, who wasn't here, although you could have been in the audience that day, I don't know. But anyway, we'll run through the presentation. I have, have it there titled 2017 Department Report 2.0 because I'm going to highlight all of the numbers and what we did from 2017. And mixed in will be some information from the first three months of 2018. But wanted to introduce you to our staff. We're small but mighty here in the, in the City Clerk's office. There is a photo there from just a week ago. We, like Councilmember Burnt, wanted to display our Do the Right shirts. We can't wear them every day at work here. But anyway, there's our team photo from Do the Right day. There listed myself. Chris Johnson is a new addition to the City Clerk's office. He is our new deputy city clerk, replacing Michelle Hill, who was with the city for about thirteen years, just over thirteen years. And we were down our deputy city clerk position for five months while trying to fill that position. So we are glad to have Chris on board. Nancy Radford, one of our assistant city clerks, she is basically our permits and licenses guru. She handles the majority of our permits and licenses for our office. Sherry Finch is our primary passport agent. She handles ninety-eight percent essentially of all of the appointments that we do for our passport program here at the city. Charlene Way, she assists in all of the land use application process. So she ensures that the, the hearings that get scheduled, the land use applications that come to the city, she helps get those scheduled, make sure all the materials are there and get them in front of either Planning and Zoning Commission and then ultimately in front of this body here. Hillary Bodnar, who you heard from earlier this evening, she's our committees and commissions specialist. She has, she's primarily tasked with supporting the Meridian Arts Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission and the events that they do and providing staff support for them. And you heard from her this evening. And then Barb Schiffer, our administrative assistant, she has been with the city for fifteen years. And this is her third department. So she is a wealth of knowledge and information. She is the frontline of defense when someone comes in or calls the office. She is the first person they speak with and she can get them directed to where they need to go. So that is our, our team right there. I mentioned the one staffing change that we had, Chris Johnson joining our team as the deputy city clerk. And it's nice to be fully staffed. Being down a position with a small team for five months can be challenging. So it's, it's nice to have a full staff. And I don't know if he is... Hey, there he is in the back of the room. There's Chris Johnson, everybody. What we do, here's just a quick snapshot of what we do. It's not everything that we do, but encompasses a majority of what we do. I'm not going to read all those bullet points to you, but as you can see, the City Clerk's office touches just about every department in some way, shape or form within the city. And our constitutional mandate in the City Clerk's office is to be the custodian of the city seal ordinances and records, to be the records manager and custodian for the city, among a few other things. But that is our primary responsibility for the city of Meridian. So 2017 by the numbers. When I came before council in December, I only had part of the year numbers-wise. So I now have an opportunity to report on a full year of, of all of 2017. And what you see there in terms of arrows up is a comparison to 2016, the entirety of 2016. So hearing applications submitted that we processed within the City Clerk's office was one hundred and sixty-eight in 2017, up almost twenty-three percent from the previous year. Notices that we mailed out for public hearings that were scheduled, just over fifty-eight hundred, which was up thirteen percent from the previous year. And I expect that number to continue to grow as large tracts of land become smaller tracts of land and subdivisions. I expect that number to grow. Next door notices, seventy-four thousand one sixty-six. So that is only for half of the year because we started next door noticing in June. And so that number, what it indicates is that's how many inboxes a notice got delivered to. Not necessarily how many opened it. But I can tell you that since we started doing next door, and I said this in December, we have seen an uptick in public participation, whether or not that's the type of project or next door or a combination of both. I'm, I'm willing to guess that it's probably a combination of both. But certainly, when you look at five thousand notices versus seventy-four thousand potential notices, that's a big difference and invites public participation. Public records requests through the City Clerk's office, just over three hundred, up twenty-nine percent from the previous year. If you ask Chief Levy, he'll tell you that there's over six thousand public records requests for the police department. That's where they have a team of people handling public records requests in the, in the police department. But for City Hall, three hundred and three, which equates to one and a half a day or so, that's, that's enough to keep some people busy within, within City Hall. Phone calls received, excuse me, licenses issued, six hundred and two. Again, up, up five and a half percent from the previous year. Keeps Nancy on her toes. Phone calls received, over twenty-five thousand phone calls received, which equates to almost a hundred phone calls a day just into the City Clerk's office. That doesn't account for people direct dialing the departments or getting, getting to that department before it comes to us. These are phone calls into the City Clerk's office. And passports processed, last year, three thousand one hundred and twenty-five, which was up just about thirty-five percent from the previous year. And you can see the revenue there to the city at seventy-eight thousand. So a 2017 snapshot of things we did or participated in, again, early voting continued to be a success here at City Hall. The, the addition there, the added Saturday voting, that's something that just happened in 2018. So the Ada County Clerk's office and their elections division wanted to try and have their election office actually during the municipal elections open on Saturday to see what kind of turnout they might, might get there at the Benjamin location. They got a pretty decent turnout. And so for this most recent election, for the, the school bond and levy, they wanted to try the same thing, have, have Saturday voting option or have that option available. And they wanted City Hall to test it out and see how that would, would work. It actually worked fantastic and the turnout was great for them on Saturday. It was their, their largest volume day here at City Hall and it actually beat the location at Benjamin. So we had more Saturday voters here than they did at Benjamin. So they are looking to continue that partnership and have Saturday voting as an option for voters that can't make it to the polls Monday through Friday. Nova's agenda was rolled out to the council in 2017. That was a, a pretty big feat. And you'll see on a, on a later slide that now we are working on rolling that out to other commissions as well. Updated temporary use code, I talked about this in December. But we extended the time for temporary sales units from ninety to a hundred and twenty days, which matches other timeframes in other parts of our city code. We removed citizens' use permits, those are no longer required. And we coordinated our processes and timelines with ACHD in a more efficient manner than needing an additional permit in order to do that and to achieve that. We also executed the first ever citywide records destruction in 2017 and updated the records retention schedule as well. Continuing that snapshot, we, we worked with IT to establish a public records request portal that has been rolled out, has been launched, the mayor spoke about it at the state of the city, that allows users to submit requests more efficiently, us to respond to requests more efficiently, provide documents in ways that are more efficient to the end user. Instead of if documents were too large, we'd have to figure out, oh, are we Dropbox-ing it or a different FTP type site? Now it's all done in-house through, through our system. We don't have to figure out different methods and ways to get various different sizes of records to the requester. The easement process, we have gone away with the relic of the old days of, of paper copies for, for easements and have streamlined that electronically with the help of IT and our enterprise software, which is Exella. Chambers Technology, I just mentioned it because we were involved in that process and from time to time, still tweaking elements of, of the technology. And sometimes I have to rip this microphone out at public hearings because it's giving feedback. Next door noticing, we added that. Something that wasn't on my December report is the Allenbaugh House support you see listed there. So early in 2017, the, the Boise City Clerk's office contacted us to ask if we at the Meridian City Clerk's office could handle support for the Allenbaugh House Board of Directors. The Board of Directors meets in this building once a month and the chair of the, of the Board of Directors is the Boise mayor. And so the Boise City Clerk's office had been handling support for that. But because they meet in this building, they wanted to reach out to see if it was possible, if, if we could partner with them and handle some of those support elements instead of their staff members having to drive here every month. We said we'd have to talk about that. We did. And so we took over the support elements of the open meeting portion of the, of the Board of Directors for Allenbaugh House in our, in our office and attend those meetings once a month in the council conference room. The Board of Adjustment, Mr. Nary, a couple of months ago, updated you on the Board of Adjustment for 2017 and how many hearings occurred there, which was seven in 2017. And just as the City Attorney's Office has to participate in all of those, so does the City Clerk's office. It starts and ends with the City Clerk's office with, as far as Board of Adjustment goes. So we had seven hearings in 2017. A few of those made it before council in terms of appeals. The last time we had that many, seven, was 2013. In 2015, I believe there was one. In 2016, there were two. In 2017, there were seven. So the last time we had that many was back in 2013. And dog license postcards, that's something new in 2018 that we just started. So if you recall, I think it was two years ago now or a year and a half ago, we updated the expiration for dog licenses. Instead of every license expiring December thirty-first, they now are rolling on the calendar year from when you purchase the dog license. What we used to do when all the licenses expired on the thirty-first of December, we would send out a mailer in all of the utility bills, reminding everyone, all the dog owners, your license is about to expire, time to, to renew if you still have that, that dog. But now that doesn't make sense for us to send out something one month in all of the utility billing accounts or every month in the utility billing accounts to remind people to update and renew their license. So what we did was, just as we do with public hearing notices, we target those that have licenses that need to renew. We use the enterprise software in Exella and we send out postcards about a month in advance of when your license is about to expire, reminding you if you still have your, your pet, time to renew. So we're targeting the base instead of having to spend the money to hit all thirty thousand accounts or thirty-four thousand accounts. Now we're, we're using a targeted approach. So in progress for us in the coming year, webpage development. You just heard from Dave and there's some backend things happening with the website that will incorporate and help us in the City Clerk's office. The two main ones are public hearing notices online. So right now, we do post our public hearing notices. It's the notice that we publish in the newspaper. We publish that, there's a link on the City Clerk's portion of the website. However, with the new software update on the backend of our website, we'll be able to have that more customizable and we'll also be able to have links associated with that. So when you're looking at the notice, you can link directly to the project instead of just the stale text that is the newspaper notice and then you have to then still go and find where the information is. So this will really help with that transparency and, and getting those notices more user-friendly on the website. The other is all agendas in a single location. So again, if you go to the City Clerk's portion of the website, you're going to find all of our various commissions and the council. They have their own pages and then the agendas are listed on those pages. So you've got to know what you're looking for and where to find it in order to, to really find it. We wanted to have a single page that listed all of the upcoming agendas for all of the commissions. The commissions will still have their pages that list what they do. But if, when you click a link there, it's going to take you to a page that has all of the agendas for council and all the commissions. And then we'll have a button or a link on the homepage of the website that says all upcoming meetings or agendas or something to that effect. When you click that, you're going to be able to see all of the upcoming public meetings occurring in this building and with the various different bodies that we're required to notice for. We are in the midst of our second records destruction. In fact, at the end of this week, I should know the final count of how many boxes that have been approved for destruction and then I can get scheduled with our contractor to- have been approved for destruction, and then I can get scheduled with our contractor to come and destroy the records that were approved a few months ago by council to destroy per the records retention schedule. Streaming all commission meetings, I have that as in progress because there's still some tweaks here and there, some kinks we're working out, but all of the meetings are currently being streamed for commissions. And you can see, I talked about Nova's agenda earlier, but we have rolled that out to the Planning and Zoning Commission now, they use it just the same way that council uses it for public hearings, and we are working with HPC and MAC to use Nova's agenda for their meeting, so that'll be upcoming here very, very soon. Something that I am working on, or we're working on, is public hearing sign-in sheets electronically. It's no secret to this body that we've had some meetings of late, that we have had a lot of people attend, and when you've got paper on the back table that people are signing in, sometimes they sign the wrong sign-in sheet, sometimes they want it in a certain order, and the orders get mixed up when papers get shuffled. So I have been working with IT to come up with a solution. We have some unused iPads in the building that I wanted to repurpose and have at the back table, that those attending the meeting can sign in using the iPad, and then that order is preserved, no shuffling around of the papers, they actually are signing the right item that they're wanting, because they have to choose that item instead of guessing which paper is which. So we're working on that currently.
And you can read the name?
And I'll be able to read the handwriting, because there won't be any handwriting. On that note, I don't have it listed, but in light, again, of recent meetings with a lot of public testimony, I have done some research around the country of various different cities and how they do the sign-in process, and there are several across the country that, like many legislatures across the country, allow for people to sign up in advance of the meeting to testify. And so I have preliminarily begun looking at various different options that might allow, again, through our website, for people to sign up in advance of the meeting, so they don't need to show up two hours or an hour early, but they know if they've signed up with the clerk's office to testify, that when they show up, their name will be preserved in the record and will be able to access that record. It can also give us the ability, if people have presentations they'd like to give, and they want to send us that early, so that we can test those presentations, make sure they're working. We don't need to take a recess necessarily to get the technology working, provide that opportunity for the public. So have just started to research that possibility and see what that looks like. And then document and process automation, I think Todd talked about this a little bit, but we in the Support Services Departments meet periodically, and one of the things that we are talking about is different processes and different documents within the city that we can improve that process, and electronic versus hard copy and what that might look like. So we're participating in that process. The citywide strategic plan, this has not changed since I spoke to you in December. Well, I guess there is one little change, but 5C1 was complete, the mayor presented that closeout report to you back in October. 5C2, we have an anticipated completion date of December of this year, and 5C3, the one change was you just recently approved through resolution, striking out utilitarian and going to all, which more accurately reflects the artwork that is throughout the city, not just making it so focused on utilitarian, but focusing on all of the artwork that is available currently in the city, and more accurately reflects what is presented throughout. I always like to end on successes, care value successes. You have in the clerk's office a tremendous team, and I work with a tremendous team of individuals that take their job seriously, that know who they serve, which is the 100,000-plus that live in the city. They love working here in this building, they accurately reflect the Meridian Way and the care values, and these are just some of the comments that we have heard about the team. So you have a great team that works in the city clerk's office, and I'm proud to work with them every day. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, CJ. Council questions, Mr. Burnt.
Thank you, CJ. As always, fantastic, good job. Wouldn't expect any less of you, by the way. Quick question about records destruction. So like, educate me how that works. Just real quickly, you don't need to spend a lot of time, just real quick.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Burnt. So the city has a records retention schedule that identifies every single type of record that we have in the city. There is a records management committee that meets periodically, that has representation from all the various departments. On that schedule, the departments have identified the type of records they have within their department, and what type of record is it? Is it a permanent record that we never want to get rid of? Is it a semi-permanent record that we can get rid of at some future time, and then they define that timeframe? Is it five years? Is it 10 years? Is it 25 years? And so all throughout the city, every department has their version of the schedule, and then that encompasses the citywide schedule. Every year, we come before council to say, here's the records retention schedule that has been approved, here are the records that have outlived their usefulness, and we ask for approval to destroy those.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
CJ, great report. I know you've got amazing staff in there, but have you thought about doing text reminders for renewals for dog licenses? Seems the way everybody's, every dentist, everybody on earth that I ever make an appointment with sends me a text reminder, and it would be close to free. I don't know if that's something you've looked into, or maybe going forward.
Have it, thank you for the question. Have thought about it really on a surface level. I can tell you that there are individuals that get their dog license but are even weary to give us their telephone number. They'll give us their address, because they know if their dog gets lost, that the dog could be returned to their address, but they may not want to give us even their home phone number, or, you know, a phone number. So I'm having, being able to utilize text reminders for the entire system, or being able to target it, we'd have to figure those details out.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
CJ, when you were here in December, we talked a little bit about our phone system and routing calls that are calling in for the public. I think at the time, you said that there was some more investigation that needed to be done. Just curious, is there a recommendation about how we're operating our phones when the public called into the main line?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Cavanagh, thank you, and I do remember that conversation and comment. Right now, as far as the clerk's office is concerned, we're fairly happy with how it is working, receiving over 25,000 calls in a year and 100 a day. If we had one person dedicated just to do that and then to route those calls and to also greet the public, would love to have that conversation. But we do have, so Barb's primarily responsible for that, and then if she's unavailable, then it kind of fans out through the phone tree, as it were. But Barb also does other things as well for us. So the current recommendation is to keep it as the way it is, because I know that productivity in our office, it helps with that. But again, if that's a larger conversation, have, more than happy to have that conversation.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, CJ, and thank you to your team as well. They do give a good first impression on the city.
Thank you.
Okay, 9D is under Public Safety Quarterly Updates. This was through a desire to kind of, now that we have established levels of service with our fire and our police department, to come to council on a quarterly basis and talk about any variances, either over, under. When those levels were set, we were not at those levels, and so what is the progress towards that? And any, anything going on in the city that perhaps you should be aware of? So Chief, I guess you're first up, huh?
Madam Mayor, Council, Chief Niemeyer told me he's going to be here all night, so he said, go ahead and go first so you can escape. Thank you for your time today. I was looking at CJ's presentation, and I know that they do amazing work for the amount of people that they have, and I really kind of got envious that he really has a small group, because they're much easier to manage than 142 employees that we have. So I guess it's kind of give and take too, because the more people, you can do more things as well. Just handed a handout for you, and as I was reviewing it, I realized that some of the colors don't show up, but those graphs were taken off of OpenGov, and gives an indication of a bar graph of where we're going with the overtime. But I would like to talk about some of the variances before we go into the overtime discussions. The other thing is, is Madam Mayor said that you got your dashboards today. I wasn't sure those were going to be released today, so you'll have an email with a summary explanation and the preliminary stats that we submitted to Vincent as well. But if you had the pleasure of looking at your emails yet today, the benchmarks should come out for the city, and there's an additional graph that I did not supply you with. Just some highlights of what's going on in the police department. We track our response times under priority ones, twos, and threes. Priority ones being a report-type call, priority two being an urgent-type call, and priority three being an emergency. We have set, or sat, response times ranges for those three priorities. Three to five minutes for priority three call, which is emergency. Eight to 10 minutes range for a priority two call, which is urgent, and then 10 to 15, or 15 to 20 minutes for a priority one report call. Now, we're coming into those ranges, but you can see it fluctuates each quarter. And there's a lot of reasons for it to fluctuate, some of it could be construction out there, some of it could be weather conditions out there, some of it could be wintertime versus summertime out there. I can tell you that our response times in our priority three calls had a decrease in time over the last quarter, but we're talking 4.08 to 4.01. So in a state of emergency, that's a nil effect. You don't realize that it took them a couple milliseconds longer, or a couple milliseconds faster to get there, because I will tell you that three minutes is an awful long time when you're wanting help. I would love to be able to give a response time to decisions like that, but with the city growing the way it is and the traffic the way it is, it would just take too many people to do that. So we're pretty happy with the fact that we can be there on average in four minutes' time. On the priority two calls, we're at 8.16. We actually had a reduction to 7.36, so we're looking really good there. And this is just a quarter-to-quarter comparison. If you look at the benchmarks that were sent today, it goes back about a year and a half, I believe, comparisons. And then we said that we wanted to be a 15- to 20-minute range for a report-type call. We believe that that's reasonable to wait for an officer that long, but we always, always are under 15 minutes, and this time we're at 12.4, and then we had an improvement down to 12.19. But again, we're talking several milliseconds, and that's not noticeable to the general public. But statistically, it's progress. Can tell you that we had, there is an error that I spotted that our staff missed, Vincent missed, and you will see it in your benchmark as an error, as an error as well. When it talks about calls for service, it says that we had a 3.3% increase, which resulted in 491 fewer calls for service. Now, I'll be the first to say that math is not my favorite subject, but I had to clarify that we had a almost 500 calls for service increase in the last three months. And then as far as our report calls, we took a 200, about a 200 report decrease over the last quarter. We had 2,214. This quarter, we had 2,047. Now, if you recall, back in December, we approved the, what we call the PAM model, Patrol Allocation Model. And at that time, we were sitting at 73 patrol officers, which would include patrol sergeants, SROs, and supervisors with the exception of, and traffic units with the exception of lieutenants. And we currently have 43. Now, when we go in and do the updates to the city growth, the population, the annexations that have occurred, and all those wonderful things that have been going on in our city, the PAM model says that you need 82 officers to provide coverage that was recommended to you at the most conservative level, which was an officer in the neighborhoods once a week. Now, I can tell you that we currently have some openings, and the reason why we have those openings is because this council has been very gracious over the last couple of years to provide positions to us, and we have been hiring like crazy. But we still have 10 openings that we have not filled yet. We currently have six officers in training, two of those officers go to the academy next week, four of those officers are not on their own, and then we currently have eight officers in background for those 10 positions. So even if we hire in the next couple of weeks, we're still going to be lacking in the numbers. Additionally, we have three people either on light duty or on FMLA, and as I speak today, I have one commander in Quantico, one commander out on FMLA, and two commanders in the southern states doing backgrounds for new hires. So we're pretty tight. What that means is that we're still getting the job done, we're still serving our mission. But I'll tell you right now, we are not in the neighborhoods at all unless we're called. If we're there for a call for service, if we're there for a request, if we're there for a traffic situation that's been, we've been called in, we're there. But for random patrols, we cannot meet that mission. Talking with the mayor earlier this week is, you will not see a request for more officers this year, because it makes absolutely no sense for me to ask for more positions that I throw on the books that I cannot fill. And even if I could fill, I do not have an adequate amount of cars and field training officers to train. So most likely, you are going to see a request for more officers next budget year, but just keep in mind that that gap increases as we go as well. Now, the good news, we talked about those graphs, and those graphs are really hard to read, but if you go down on, just on the first page that I have there, you'll see the numbers. And we have six months into the budget year, so really, we're tracking 50%. Sometimes it uses more in one month than you do on other months. The concern that we have is that some of the winter months are slower, you know, and the summer months are busier, so even though we're 50% right now, it may fluctuate as we get into the busier months. Despite the situation that we're at in patrol, we've used 50% of our overtime. Now, some of that is uncontrollable, because we cannot predict when the officers have to go to court, and the officers are mandated to go to court. And only one of my four shifts that I have are during daylight business hours, which means that we have to pay overtime for the officers to go to court. But so far, we're doing pretty good. If you look down there on Colonel Investigations Division, we're about 70% use of our overtime at this point. Again, we cannot predict major investigations, but we've been working on some major investigations that you will have knowledge of in the near future, when I can release some of that information. You'll see a slight increase in records, that's because we've had some, and at records, we operate on a very small staff, like the city clerk's office does, and when one person is out, that makes a big difference, and that one person just had a baby. And that one person just had a baby, and so she's out for several months, so we have to use overtime to cover that. Code enforcement, recently, we just lost a code enforcement officer. He decided to move back to the state of Arizona, and so we have to make sure that that's covered as well. So you see some increases in some overtime use there. Nothing alarming, which was nice to see. And then I saw kind of tracking some overtime use in admin. And I'm thinking, that's unusual because several of us, most of us are exempt, and we don't get overtime. So I go, where is that going? And I do have one. I have two support staff and one sergeant that is assigned to admin. And that has been for our advanced training academies. So he's also the coordinator of those academies. So he's trying to do backgrounds, hires, and do the advanced training academies. So we have about $4,000 in overtime that we've covered in that as well. So with that being said, we're moving forward. We're getting the job done. You've been quite helpful to me. It's just been difficult to try to fill those positions. I know the mayor and I have discussed the timing that it takes to fill those positions. And we've tried to improve those efficiencies. But we need to make sure that we screen all individuals so we are not hiring other people's problems, that we can continue to enjoy the level of service and the positive service that we provide this community without letting somebody through that shouldn't be here. So it's always a balance. Once we can get that gap reduced a little bit, we can speed up. But currently, we have 13 openings we're trying to fill. That's 10 patrol officers, a code supervisor, a code officer, and an evidence tech. So it's a little challenging. So with that, I wasn't quite sure what we were looking for or what we were going to discuss. So I figured this is a great time to have that dialogue. I will answer any questions that I can. And any questions I can't, I'll get those answers and either bring them back to you immediately or bring them back to you next quarter. With that, Mayor, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Chief. Sorry, Dean. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Not a question, but just a big thank you. Having been the liaison since last October, I am just, it never ceases to amaze me, Chief, what you and your team do with a significant shortage of resources. But I'm very impressed that they do work very diligently to make sure that the quality of the new officers is, meets the standard of Meridian and not just filling positions with bodies. So, so thank you for all that you guys do.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Little Roberts, I appreciate you saying that. We have an amazing staff. We absolutely have amazing staff. And I will tell you that we have to do everything that we can to not lose them because they are that great. But then the other thing is, is it's so hard to fill those positions. So I thank you for saying that. I'll pass that message along.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Jeff, can you just send us a digital copy?
I absolutely will. Yeah, I'll do it as soon as I sit in my seat.
And we were really pleased to see that you're using opengov.com because that's what we had hoped, that the citizens would use it, but also so would our city employees.
Madam Mayor, I can't, I can't make a positive comment now.
I could hear Todd applauding.
I can't make a positive comment now because Todd's in the audience. But it's pretty awesome. It's pretty easy. Love it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Counsel, good evening. I can say that. It's after 5 o'clock. You're going to see a lot more of me this evening, I think. So we're sticking with the same theme, covering levels of service and where we're at, as well as overtime. I asked Keith to stick around just for old time's sake, but he had another appointment to go to. I said we were talking about overtime, so I'd as well stick around.
Councilman Bird.
Yeah, map in the background. PowerPoint's good. Flowers are not my PowerPoint. Sorry. Roses, right? Okay, so I got to figure out. There we go. So the areas we're going to cover this evening, real quick, review response performance data. How are we doing? What are we doing? Current staffing levels and staffing challenges, past quarter overtime review, how the additional firefighters helped. I think you're going to be amazed at some of the numbers here. And then some ongoing challenges that we have with testing injuries, et cetera. And then future topic of staffing of Station 6. So, real quick, a performance review as far as our level of service. And what I want to do is compare last year's second quarter to this year's second quarter and then talk about the levels of service that you established and how we're doing with those. So you look at 2017 second quarter, we're talking January through the end of March, 1,589 total calls for service that resulted in 2,096 total unit responses. So as you know, there are calls that we have, structured fires, car accidents, in which more than one apparatus responds. That's why you see the disparity there. We do for our measurements and our data, we look at code three responses, very similar to what Chief Levy just talked about in law enforcement. We have code three and code two responses. Code three is all the woo-woos and the lights, and code two is no lights, no sirens. Last quarter of last year, or second quarter of last year, our turnout time was a minute 37 at the 90th percentile, meaning 90% of the time, we got out of the barn in a minute 37 or less. Our goal is 90 seconds or a minute 30. That's the goal that we established. And our travel time was eight minutes and 20 seconds 90% of the time, eight minutes and 20 seconds or less. If you look at the recently completed second quarter, so January of 18 through the end of March, we have 1,517 total calls for service, resulting in 1,870 unit responses. We had 1,562 of those were code three or emergent. And if you look at our turnout time, we're at a minute 30 at the 90th percentile. It's a 7% decrease over the previous year's second quarter. And our travel time was six minutes and 15 seconds 90% of the time or less. So that was a 25% decrease. We analyzed why that is, and if you remember last year, the wintertime really stunk around here as opposed to this year. So we were able to get around a lot quicker this year than we were last year, comparing year over to year, quarter to quarter. So some of the continued challenges that we are facing in the data analysis, it is pretty complex to analyze travel times based on population density. CJ, if you want to pull that map up now, real quick, I didn't include that in the slides. But when we look at population densities across our entire response area, just to refresh you while we're pulling that up, the standards we set were five minutes or less in the urban densities. That's 2,000 people or greater per square mile. Suburban densities are 1,000 to 2,000. That's a seven-minute travel time standard. And then our rural areas, which is green on this map, we have a nine-minute travel time standard 90% of the time or greater. So this gives you an idea of where our urban centers are, where our suburban in the yellow, and then our rural in the green. I will tell you, there are some areas in red that we will never be able to hit in five minutes or less. And one that I will point out is Cherry Lane and Meridian Road. Now, you would think Station 1 on Franklin, we should be able to bust through and get down there. But if you think about the number of lights going down Main Street, which is the route they have to take to get to that intersection of Cherry Lane and Meridian, we cannot hit it in five minutes or less. And you would think right in the middle of town, we should be able to do it. But with traffic, with the speed limits, and with going through downtown out of Station 1, simply can't hit it, never will, unless we plop a station right there at the intersection, which I don't think is real feasible. I've brought up in the past an example of Station 5, the subdivision directly behind the fence of Station 5. We can never hit in five minutes or less because we have to get out on scene and go around and go through a subdivision to get there. So there's going to be areas in our city with our standard, even though we set it, will never hit in five minutes unless we do something different as far as station location. So that's just an idea of where those population densities are. When you have multiple population densities and multiple standards, working with GIS, and I want to give Dave TD, Matt Hoffman, a big shout out. They work exclusively, Matt does with Charlie, in getting this data to us. So they've really done a great job of assisting us in trying to get you the information that you want. Dispatch, PD's a little bit more advanced than we are. On the fire side of dispatch, which is run through AD County, almost all of our calls that were sent on are code three, meaning lights and sirens. Very few calls that we go on are non-code. We're working with the dispatch center. We believe that time-sensitive emergencies like structured fires, heart attacks, shortness of breath, strokes, those are true code three calls. There's a lot of stuff we go on that, quite honestly, we don't need to be responding like that. So we're continuing to work with the dispatch center to get that better dialed in. We do have some skewed data when it comes to multiple unit responses. Our clock stops when the first unit arrives on scene. And so sometimes when you have those multiple unit responses, the data gets a little bit skewed. And then we are working for more automated tools. What have we done to improve our performance? The reason our shoot time has decreased is we've analyzed it. For the last quarter, we have been running the truck out of Station 1 exclusively. Prior to that, we were cross-staffing apparatus. So the firefighters would have to figure out what call type it was, have delays in getting into the right apparatus, get their equipment on, et cetera. We've seen a 15% decrease in the shoot time at that station by not cross-staffing. We wanted to use that trial to see what that would do to our shoot times. We have reduced our EMS calls through our joint-access EMS system. So there are several call types now that we're only sending the closest ALS unit, whether that's an ambulance or a fire engine with a paramedic on it. Diabetics are a good example of how we have eliminated some of those calls where we're tying up multiple units on the same call. And then working with AD County Dispatch and the fire departments, we're working to change the auto-alarm responses. Over the past two years, our study, you see there are 197 residential alarm, 574 commercial. Those are fire alarms where the system is going off. We, countywide, send a full response to that, meaning a ladder truck, three engines, and a battalion chief. When we work on dispatch protocols, we in Meridian can't just arbitrarily say, "We want this" because those dispatch protocols are set up countywide through the dispatch center. We've had two fires out of all those call types. That's a quarter of less than 1%. And those two calls were handled by the first arriving unit. So what we're trying to get changed is instead of sending multiple apparatus that tie up our resources, send one. And then if we need to bring more, we'll bring more. So that is something currently being worked on within the operations, folks. I mentioned automated response. I have brought to you in the past in TARA as a budget enhancement. The direction was go back and work collectively with your partners. So Boise Fire received a grant. They've now opened up in TARA to all the other agencies. This is an example of it here on the screen. This is real-time data that we can monitor and watch to see what our turnout time is and our travel time. This is a huge help from a standpoint of monitoring our data and monitoring our expectations. So we're very excited about this. Charlie Butterfield is working on this project. So now we have real-time data, which has been a big challenge for us in the past. This is all live from CAD and from our report-writing system. And so it's a great tool for us to have. It's no cost right now. Boise Fire, because of the grant, are allowing all the agencies to use this free of charge. For FY '19, it'll be free of charge, and then FY '20, it'll be a collective cost sharing for the program to be used. So we're very excited about this. Current staffing levels and challenges, you can see we have a number of vacancies right now. We've had Operations Chief David Jones has submitted his resignation. He's moving to another department. This is a big hit for us, a big loss. David has been absolutely instrumental in the last six years and the work he has done on behalf of our department and our city. So that's going to be a tough one to replace. We have a battalion chief that retired, Rod Schall, so we have a battalion chief vacancy. We have an engineer, Howard Miller, that has retired, so we have an engineer vacancy. We have two upcoming captains retirements, one at the end of this month and one the beginning of June. So we are in that cycle now as a department. We've, we knew this was coming, where we're going to have not just one-off retirements, but groups of retirements. So that's created a challenge for us. We do have promotional testing going on in May to get those vacancies filled. We'll have lists established by June 1st. And then staffing for Station 6, we're going to have three more captains, three more engineers there to promote. I can tell you right now, we have five applications to test for captain. We have six spots that we need to fill. So per the collective labor agreement, we'll put on a second test. And if we don't get additional candidates, we'll be hiring to the outside to get those positions filled. Second quarter overtime review, I'm going to plug opengov again, as Chief Levy did. So this is a graph taken right out of opengov, where you can go in and evaluate overtime. Todd is still here, and Jenny and Rita, I really want to thank them as well. Overtime has been an issue since I became a fire chief, which is about eight years ago. And that means Todd and I have been working on overtime for the last eight years, monitoring that on a regular basis. Every month, I get a very detailed report from Todd where we compare and analyze the triggers for overtime and the reasons behind overtime. So I want to get into that just a little bit. Shift overtime spent to date, so October 1 to date, 321,000. We have 433 budgeted. And we'll talk about why that is occurring. I've got a detailed breakout here. Training overtime, we're well under budget. We're projected to stay well under budget. And admin non-exempt overtime, again, we're under budget and projected to stay very well under budget. The shift overtime is the concern. What caused it? Battalion chief, we've had two battalion chiefs trying to fill three shifts. That has caused a fairly good chunk of overtime. Captains, we've had one captain off work comp for the entire quarter and one captain off on FMLA for two months. We've had two engineers off work comp for the entire quarter, one off work comp for one month of the quarter. A firefighter has been off FMLA for the entire quarter. We had 1,604 hours total work comp, 72 hours of wellness leave, 48 hours bereavement, 2,818 of sick leave. So getting into that a little bit more, what does that cost us? The last quarter, and this is taken right out of TimeCard, the BC overtime the last quarter costs us $16,854. We had to cover 362 hours. Our captain overtime cost, we had to cover 1,643 hours. That was a tune of $72,000. The last quarter engineer overtime, we had to cover 1,310 hours. That was $55,910. The question has always been, what happens if you have extra staff? We have extra firefighters right now, and we're plenty of firefighters. You can see there, we have six float firefighters and 12 extra that we hired for Station 6. The last quarter, we spent $62.50 in firefighter overtime. That's what happens when you have enough staff. So that question has always been asked. We've never had the opportunity to evaluate it because we've never been at staffing, let alone overstaffed. And so this is an example of what happens when you have the staff to do it. And then lastly, Station 6 staffing discussion, there will be a policy decision that will need to be made as we move forward. Ideally, in a perfect world, we'd like to bring that engine up October 1 to get them working together. But we do have an overtime issue, and we're going to have some extra personnel. The promotions for vacancies will occur in June. That will allow us, June, October, to evaluate those added staffing positions at the captain-engineer rank to see what that does to overtime. The alternative idea would be to continue using the promoted personnel to cover vacancies until the station opens. And I really think that's a policy decision at the city council level that we need to engage in. So with that, I want to keep this fairly brief and certainly stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Chief, appreciate the 2017 versus 2018 comparison. Can you send us data for 2016 as well?
I can. Yep. I had to think about that one for a sec, but yes, I can.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Chief, so I just keep running it over in my head. Why wouldn't the truck go up Meridian Road instead of Main Street? You have to go onto Cherry and Meridian.
Say again?
You said that if they need to go to Meridian and Fairview, they take Main Street as opposed to Meridian Road.
It's a good question. Maybe misspoke.
They would take Meridian Road, right? Okay, I'm like, wait.
My head is Meridian is one way, but that's, yeah. So they would.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Chief, can you share with us, not today, but you can email it out, the travel time, quarterly travel time broken up into those urban, suburban, and rural?
And I can give you an idea right now. I forgot, I had that piece of paper in front of me, and I forgot to include it. So last quarter, our urban travel time at the 90th percentile, meaning 90% of the time, we do it in this amount or less, is six minutes, six minutes and two seconds. Our suburban is seven minutes and four seconds. 90% of the time, we do it in that or less. And then our rural is seven, sorry, eight minutes and two seconds, 90% of the time. So we're meeting essentially the suburban and rural based on the standards that council adopted. We're about a minute over the urban travel time standard. And I'll add that to the PowerPoint and send it out.
Anything further?
I will ask real quick, these are going to be quarterly reports updates. Is there anything else you all would like to see or hear as part of those updates?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
This goes for you and for please. Getting this information before our meeting is, I think, an expectation that we need to just set. Makes it very challenging to follow presentation and be able to be prepared for any type of questions or response when we're just getting the first look at the information.
And, and again, this was kind of the fishing cast in, in terms of what kind of information is desired. is desired. This was kind of the chiefs and I getting together and saying, here's our thoughts and what might be helpful for counsel to learn, especially as we're entering into budget times. And in particular, because levels of service have been discussed and decisions are being made towards those. So if you think of anything else that would be helpful to put in this, yeah, now that we have an idea that this is indeed the kind of information, we can get that out in the packet ahead of time. Okay, Item 9E is under our Public Works Department.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers.
Oh, there's Susie. It's like, where is that voice?
With your indulgence, I'm going to steer from here because I'm going on to the internet. So this afternoon, or this evening, I'd like to demonstrate a new feature that we've added to the Public Works website. It allows users to obtain information about active or future Public Works projects by selecting a location on a map. I'm going to walk you through how to access the map and show you some of the features. This project aligns with the city's strategic plan of Objective 3E to enhance transparency for the city government. Similar to the ACHD roadwork in the area map, this map allows public access to information about current or planned Public Works projects. By linking this online map to information in the engineering project management database, staff and citizens now have easy, quick access to current basic project information. This allows staff to answer simple questions about Public Works projects or to direct callers to the correct project manager. I want to give kudos to our team. From GIS, we had Stephen Hulbert and Katie Jones. From IT, we had Nick Ferris and Doug Green. From our engineering staff, Kyle Raddick and Warren Stewart. From water, we had Doug Schofield. Dale was our sponsor. Our former communications specialist, Aubrey Plots, spearheaded the efforts, and I was part of the project as well.
You led the project.
So the project began in November of 2017, and we actually went live with it late in December and early January of this year. So I'm going to show you how to get there. You go to the Public Works website, or the city website, you go to Public Works, sorry. And then you scroll down, and under Resources, you click Public Works Utility Project Map. There's always an agreement that you have to agree to the terms, so that's part of the project. This is what it looks like. The default page is the legend page. You'll see both green and orange markings on the map. The green ones are active construction projects. The orange ones are future projects that will be done sometime within the next five years. Let's click on a project. When you click on a project, on one of the lines that are highlighted, it tells you some information about the project. It gives you what kind of project it is. It tells you the title, the project number, who the project manager is, a description on active projects. It will show you the estimated start date and estimated end date, and it will also give you contact information for the Public Works Department. As you can see, the green ones show you the end and beginning dates. The next tab is the near-me tab. This allows users to search for projects near an address. So it can go anywhere from zero to five miles, so I'll show you how that works.
Wow. The water department helped get us a pond or lake or something. That's awesome. And some new topography.
It's always harder to type when everybody's watching. So that's City Hall. Those are all the projects that are either active or within, or will be active in, within five years, in a one-mile radius of City Hall. If you click in another location, it resets the map so you can find what else is near If you do want to click on an active project, you do have to go back to the list or the legend in order to click to find what the project is. The next tab is the About tab. This gives you tips for viewing different projects. So if we click wastewater, as you know, there are tons of projects at wastewater. We have eight current projects going on, and the way to find the different information about each project is to select the tab that goes through and scrolls through, and it'll show you the information about each different project. Also in this tab is a link to the ACHD Rita map, because not all the projects in the area are ours. So we wanted to give users a way to get to the ACHD projects as well. So the link right here will take you to the ACHD website, which will do, it functions very similarly. Next is the Layers tab, which will show you, there's a couple of things that it shows you. The first thing it shows you is the borders for the Meridian area of impact. That's what this is. Turn that off or on. Only the projects within Meridian are shown. It's not countywide. And then if you click the capital improvement, you can show only the future projects, you can show only the active projects, or you can show both. So it depends on what your preference is and what you're looking for. And finally, we have what is called the Base Map Gallery tab. This purely shows you, allows you to change the look of the map. It defaults to the topographic. There's also satellite views and then street views with different street names. Currently, the usage is about three to four hits per day. Those are right now mainly staff members because we haven't really published it to the public. But Casey is going to now push this information to Nextdoor and Facebook users. We wanted to introduce it to you first so that if you had questions from citizens, what is this? You had at least seen it, and now you can play with it and see what's going on in the area. The benefits of this project is it allows the admin staff, when they receive a call saying, "What's going on in front of my house?", they can quickly go to the map, say, "Where do you live?", they can find the address, they can click on the project and say, "Oh, that's this project. Here's the project manager. This is what they're doing." I can send you to them if you have further questions. We've also had our staff directing the public to this website so that they can look themselves and see how long it's going to last, and if they have questions, where they can have contact information. It provides transparency to the public to see those active and planned projects, and it drives citizens to the website for the city to learn more about the city and our projects. We counted this a win as far as transparency, and it was, it's been very successful with our staff. They love having this information at their fingertips. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Wow, this is fantastic. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I guess a comment and then a question. I agree, it sounds with the kind of the sidebar conversations from counsel, that I think we're all really excited about this, where I think we're all kind of nerdy when it comes to this type of stuff. I guess my suggestion would be is to make this as easy as possible for our citizens to access it. So maybe it's coming up with a custom URL that we're posting on our construction sign so that when the public sees this project, they know right where they can go to find more information about it, so we're not having to necessarily connect with a staff member to get those same questions answered. And then my question is, how often will this be updated? Will this be updated? Is it kind of on a plan to be updated annually, semiannually, as new projects merge?
The idea of this is it's directly tied to our engineering project management database. So as soon as one of the engineers makes an update to that database, it shows up here. We're limited on kind of the look and feel of what it is because it's connected to our GIS system, and some of that software has limitations on what we can make it do because it's not our software. It's a software that's globally available. But our GIS team has done a really spectacular job in updating it. If a job is, if a project is currently in an inactive state or a future state, as soon as the project manager says it's going into construction, it changes color, it goes green, and it becomes inactive.
Thank you.
Well, Susie, I know this has been your baby, and you saw it through conception to birth. So congratulations. This is a great transparency tool indeed, and if you'll convey our congratulations and appreciation to the entire team as well for our job well done. Okay, 9F is under Parks and Recreation Department. It is now evening. Good evening, Renee.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, I do have one, if you could pull it up.
It's Kim.
It's okay.
It's like...
Renee and I are of a type, so no problem at all.
When I said it, it's like, that wasn't right.
And that's actually a wonderful segue into this presentation, which is an opportunity to develop a trailhead at Ten Mile Road for a five-mile creek pathway. So that can get a little bit confusing. So I trust that if I misspeak sometime during this presentation, Ten Mile Road widening, Five Mile Creek pathway, because I may say the wrong thing. So we do have an opportunity. And to develop a trailhead, I'm going to see if I can pull it up. Here where the red star shows, it's an ACHD property. They've actually offered to donate to us. So Ten Mile Road's being widened. There's completed pathway to the east and the southeast along Five Mile Creek a few miles by now. And then kind of in the center of the screen here, this is our Segment D project that we're making some progress on. And to the west, towards the Oaks, pathway's starting to be built too. So we have some good pressures working on these gaps, and kind of an exciting opportunity And it arose when we reached out to ACHD, knowing they were going to widen Ten Mile Road, and we were curious, how is this going to affect our pathway? How will we get across? Anyone who has been out on Ten Mile Road near the wastewater treatment plant, it is a dicey crossing, and it is not friendly to pedestrians. Councilman Burnt, you missed it on the pathways tour, but it was, anyway, as exciting work is happening here. So ACHD is in the design phase now. In February, they were at about 30%, so moving right along. In fact, I think they accelerated the timeframe right of way next year, and then construction in 2020. And we're hoping to be a part of that, or we want to consider it at least. So they did share some, hopefully this will work. Oh, no. We had drone footage of the corridor, and I think that it's not going to show up for our pathway. Can you help me see? Return to slideshow.
Appreciate that you're here.
Thank you. Can you see if that link will activate? It's really cool. I don't think there's any sound. And we won't show you very much of it. It just provides a great aerial view of the project. Not a big deal if it won't go. But it is, I will say, while we're waiting, since we have a drone and an operator here at the city, this is kind of a cool opportunity, I think, to celebrate pathways. No. Okay, let's just return to slideshow. We've got us still here. Okay, I apologize for that. So here's the parcel. If you are sitting at About Eustick, looking north on Ten Mile Road, this is the 1.5-acre parcel that ACHD has offered us, and we had thought to develop a trailhead potentially. Five Mile Creek is right here, runs through toward the wastewater treatment plant over to the west. Idaho Power Substation, there's an existing McNeilus pathway here, and then the Five Mile Creek pathway that's developed toward Rita Husky Park. So the location is optimal to serve the pathway. So we're envisioning a trailhead that would have parking, so you could drop your car and get on the pathway. It might have amenities for pathway users, so water, filling stations, bike repair station, something like if you happen to be up at Bogus and you're skiing and your snowboard or your skis aren't working, there's a table or a station where you can do some quick repair work, fix the flat, a bit of seating, more just to take a break, tie your shoe, wait for your, wait for your crew to get ready. We'd also plan on signage as part of this. So it's very, very conceptual at this point, but we've, we think the idea has some promise. And beyond dedicated amenities for pathways in the pathway system, this trailhead could really be a gateway. And we, as someone who knows the system pretty well by now, I think we've got a lot more going pathway-wise than a lot of people in the community might be aware of. And some of that is that we spend our time on redways, and they're fast, and they're busy, and the whole point of the pathway system, or one major point, is to provide an alternate experience, a safe experience, something that's removed from that. But by that same token, I think there, this is a chance to celebrate, yes, here's the pathway, here's the gateway to it, to bring it some identity and visibility and brand, if you will. And also, I have the Rita Husky picture shown here, but I know we've made an effort with park properties in terms of place-making to try to give places a distinct identity. So could we start to create that for the pathway system here at this trailhead with some specific graphics, you know? So the pathway reads as a whole, and it has, it's kind of a place in and of itself, even as it's a linear parkway. And I do think that as the system grows, we will need more direct access. Now, we can park in parks, and a lot of people access the pathways from the road, or from the neighborhoods. But I, you know, go 10, 20 years out, I think there will be a need to, for people to access the system, hopefully for commuting, or who knows? But in looking out, I think there's going to be more of a need for some parking and some trailhead services. So to date, we have presented this idea to the Parks Commission. They were enthusiastic. They did have a chance to see it. We were out on our pathways tour last week. Shelley took some photos for us, but we got lucky with weather. That was a fun, pardon me, a fun tour. And so we were able to look at the site and some of the challenges and opportunities and make that suicide crossing at Ten Mile Road. So we've been directed to present this to you and ask, do you think this is a good idea? Is this something we should pursue in terms of possibly a budget amendment for next year? I suspect that you'd be curious to know what we're looking at in terms of cost, if we're going to move forward with this. So we made a few cost assumptions. We haven't done any design beyond the colored graphic you saw, which really, there's not much detail to it. So these are high-level numbers, but we're assuming trailhead and pathway signage, both for wayfinding, but also for identity and place-making. Parking spaces, we could fit, or realistically do anything from 18 to about 40. So just depending on need, we've estimated roughly something in the middle. Amenities, some of those amenities would require utilities, like drinking water. We'd probably need electricity to the site. It's a beautification opportunity, and we're looking always in Meridian for shade, so street trees and landscaping along Ten Mile Road and as part of this amenity. And then also, a pathway, excuse me, a bridge crossing of, and the crossing of Ten Mile Road. So here is what we arrived at, and again, these are very rough preliminary numbers. I think it's interesting to note, not only the cost, but the opportunity to save with a cost share. I'm sure you're familiar with situations like that. We estimate there might be as much as an $80,000 savings if we were to dovetail this project with ACHD's road widening and... with ACHD's road widening and do a cost share. And then we also have the donated land, which is not included in that estimate. So we would ask you, is this an idea to pursue? Should we get more specific in talking to ACHD and exploring this idea? We need to do it fairly quickly as they're moving along with design. I would stand for questions and comments now.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Burnt?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Kim, fantastic presentation. Thank you so much. I think, you know, with my experience with the Parks Department, you know, the Parks Commission, one of the things that I've noticed over the years is that not too many people know about our pathway system. It's crazy that people are familiar with micropathways that we have in different subdivisions, but very few people know like the grand scheme, the big picture of what we're doing. In my opinion, this trailhead could give it some identity and could give it like what you said earlier, I completely agree, branding, and could bring awareness to what we're doing in the big picture as it relates to our pathway system. So I agree with what you said. It gives us, it gives the citizens of our community more direct access to a place where they can park, get out of their vehicles, grab their bikes, or grab their strollers, or their fitness gear, and go for a walk, or a run, or a ride. As far as the parking is concerned, if this is something that this body decides to move forward with, I think that it would be very important to discuss as many parking spots as possible. In my opinion, we would want to do it the right way the first time. So my recommendation would get as many parking spots as possible. If it's 40, then we need 40. So other than that, well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Would ACHD be willing to give us the property if we said, we'll do it, but gave them absolutely no timeline as to when?
I...my guess is they might be. We do have a representative from ACHD here, we could ask him, or not.
We love putting Justin on the spot.
Yeah.
So we...
Would you like him to speak to it, or should we? We could get back to you with that answer soon. They seemed pretty quick to offer it for use. I know it's been considered as a park and ride.
I think he wants to talk.
Come on up.
Park and ride could be great, too.
Good evening, Justin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Justin Lucas, representing the Ada County Highway District, 3775 Adam Street, Garden City, Idaho. Yes, I don't think the opportunity to, for the city to acquire this property from ACHD is limited to this, to this specific project. It is surplus property. We already have a pond on the site. I believe we've even, several years ago when we built that pond, considered and were in talks with the city about transferring that property over to you. So I think that's always an opportunity. That being said, the benefit, just from a construction standpoint of doing it with an ACHD project, and we've done this several times with the city on many projects, I'm not advocating one way or the other, but there is a real benefit to, when you're putting down asphalt and concrete, and you're doing that in association with a multimillion-dollar roadway project, the economy of scale is real, and that's something that is, when it comes to bidding out these types of projects, can be advantageous to the city. That's just something to consider, like we have done on previous projects.
Any other questions for Justin, since we have him here?
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you. Okay, council, any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylon.
I don't have many questions, but just comments. I think it's a great idea. I agree with Councilman Burnt, and having the trailhead is something I think that is necessary to bring awareness and to get people using the pathways more. I mean, I know that they're out there, but I know I can go to Tully Park, and I can park there and go back and forth on the Bud Porter Pathway. But that's about the only place that comes to my mind that I know. You know, there probably are other places, but I just don't think there are enough places where you could park your car and safely, you know, with little children or something, have access to the pathway system. So I think it's a great idea. I am in support.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, for me, there's always something cool we can do right now. I love the idea, and I understand the benefit of the opportunity for the savings, but we often look at the long-term opportunity costs with anything else, that we have plans for projects for parks that are either partially completed or under construction to be partially completed, that when we do the cool thing now, because we might save, could mean delay of other projects in their eventual completion. So for me, I like the idea. I think we should do it, but I think we should not do it right now.
And Madam Mayor, if I may respond to that, it's, and Councilman, it's kind of an interesting catch-22, because I do think the whole idea was catalyzed by the potential savings. Like, we didn't really show up thinking, let's develop a trailhead, and it may not make that much sense to do it for a while without this opportunity. So I certainly hear your comment. There is, something occurred to me while Justin was answering, and I would like to say, just to add in, we do have an opportunity to get a pedestrian crossing, a wide pathway standard pedestrian crossing of Five Mile Creek incorporated with the bridge and the proposed pedestrian hybrid beacon that ACHD will install. And so at the very least, I'm thinking we may need to come back to you with that request, because I do think that's an opportunity that we would benefit from taking advantage of now. This, if it's your direction not to go forward, it's definitely something to keep in mind. And there are, as Justin said, economies of scale with the, not only bulk quantities of materials, but with project engineering, you avoid the need, if the road has been widened, to then come back in and cut through the curb and the sidewalk and take things out and put them back. So, yeah, the efficiency is exciting, there's a reality to it as well.
What is the timeframe for ACHD? They need to have, I mean, they know our budget process, and if council wants to look at this with an entire picture, it would have to go through the budget process. Does that timeframe work?
My understanding, or recollection, is that we would need to have something to ACHD early summer, so it's coming up. And I guess I, I'm not sure I can speak to that fully, since I haven't been at the city for a full budget cycle, so I'm not sure in terms of timing.
So Justin, this council, to be able to consider this budget enhancement along with all the others for 2019, would, our budget process starts in June, and the second workshop's in July, so third week of July, we should know council's thoughts on this. Does that work within your timeframe?
Once again, Justin Lucas with the Ada County Highway District. You know, this project is on ACHD's shortlist of projects we are trying to accelerate for various reasons, one of which was a major retail center that was recently approved by the council. And so, as you know, as part of that, the timing of Ten Mile Road has become a question of concern to make sure that we try as best we can to have Ten Mile Road north of Eustick all the way to Chindon completed generally at the same time. And that, that's difficult when we're balancing private contractors and their process with the ACHD process on this specific project. And this project is a little more difficult with the bridge crossing and other things that we're trying to work through. That's a long way to get to the answer, which is, we probably want to know as soon as we can. That being said, the city certainly wouldn't have to allocate the funds to ACHD until the standard process next, in the 2020, when the project is actually constructed. I'm not sure how the agreement is worded as it relates to design. Maybe there is some flexibility where ACHD proceeds forward and the city is on a parallel course with design, so maybe there's some way to balance this out. So I wish I could give you a specific day that we needed this. I am not the project manager for this specific project, and I can't do that today, but we could certainly get you that information.
Yes, if you can. You know, I guess if you can give us a timeframe of what your process is, and when you're putting out the RFP, and that sort of thing, and maybe this is just an add-on, an optional that you can... So I think there's a couple of creative ways you can do it to allow this project to go through the process.
Absolutely, Madam Mayor, and we can do our best to work with the city and your timing, and Kim and I can talk to the project manager and try and determine the best way to make this work. If the city is legitimately considering this, and you need some time to consider it, I think that's fair, and we can work with you on that.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I can just add to that a little bit.
Yes, Kim.
It sounded like Justin and Kim maybe can follow back too, but I did find the email from Dave Rader, who is the PM at ACHD, and he requests that the application, so the process is we apply for these non-transportation components, they take it, their attorneys draft up an agreement and send it back to us that we consider, and then that's really when we're officially on the hook, we sign the application saying, yep, we're going to do this. But first step is just to even ask them to include this in the scope of their project. And he's asked to have that done by 75% design scheduled to be submitted around mid-July of 2018. So we do have time that almost lines up with the budget process there, and that's, again, even just to get the cost share application to him by mid-July of 2018. So the timing's there, if you direct staff to apply, and then we can see the terms that come back from ACHD, say, if you want us to do this, here's what we expect you to do for design, here's what we expect you to do for construction, or here's what we don't want to do for you, you hire your own contractor. So anyways, just, I had it at my fingertips, I thought I'd share.
Thank you, Caleb. Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, I'd say maybe, go ahead and put the enhancement together for just the bridge aspect, but not necessarily the full buildout. That way, we're taking advantage of that situation, and we can decide later when to build the parking lot and everything else. Unless the rest of that is tiny compared to the bridge part of it.
I think maybe you could build your enhancement with a couple of options.
I think that's a good idea, Madam Mayor. We did get some cost information for the bridge, and I think that to widen that bridge, Dave Rader, the project manager at ACHD, if I just may say for the record, he's been really forthright, really welcoming, really great to work with in terms of building pathway and pedestrian access into this project. So thanks to him, I haven't spoken with him for a month or two. But I think that the bridge for $25,000 participation approximately, we can get the 10-foot-wide pathway, and I think that trying to cross the creek separately further, you know, upstream, we'd be in it for twice at least, I can't, we haven't costed that out, but it is significant, that savings in particular.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And I've looked into those, because there's numerous places around the city where, if there was just a bridge across the creek, we'd have major connections, but they're like six figures to be dealing with the irrigation districts and making sure that they can have the access they want and the quality bridge that they would require. And so if it's only 25,000 to make this work, then I say, let's make that happen.
That a boy tie, that a boy.
Yeah, I think, so what I'm hearing is, let's work with ACHD and start some preliminary in your budget enhancement, build, you know, option one and two, and then it can be considered through the process.
Okay, Madam Mayor and Councilman. So as part of those options, since we're still preliminary, we're not really asking for a vote tonight, I assume we have some latitude to say, you know, here's one add-on, or we might continue to push to look at the project itself, or the project in its entirety or components of that beyond the bridge, just to see what that would entail? Is that, do we have some latitude there? I don't want to go beyond what Councilman Palmer is saying, but I'd like to explore sort of the best option.
Well, you had Councilman Palmer's statement, you had Councilman Burnt's statement, so you have two different options just right there.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
If you have a, maybe you have a middle one now.
I'm all about the middle.
Mr. Kavner.
Madam Mayor, I guess the suggestion would be, bring us back an enhancement that is for a full buildout, one that is just for the bridge, and if there is a third recommendation that staff feels is appropriate, I'm one council member that would be open to hearing that.
Excellent.
There you go. One, two, three.
We will get specific, and we'll get creative in terms of options, and we'll plan to come back and discuss that in a little more detail soon.
Perfect.
With your permission.
Yeah, in June.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
It does sound like there's consensus with the A, B, or C option, that at the very least, the option of acquiring title of the real property, connecting the pathway, maybe even just greening it up, at the very least will be acceptable.
No, I think, you know, the property and at least the bridge, and then, now we need the cost and how it works with all the other requests.
So, all right. Thank you, everyone. Is that all?
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, item 9G is under Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. March 27th, Limebike, Megan Coferd with Limebike was here. You received a presentation, there was actually a demonstration out in City Hall Plaza as well before that meeting. You all directed staff to do some more research and bring back a draft agreement with Limebike. So staff from Parks, Community Development, and Legal have met since the last, since the 27th. I put together a memo dated April 5 that should be in your packet, as well as an updated MOU between the city, a draft MOU between the city and Limebike. I'm not going to read to you the memo, hopefully you've had a chance to look at it and you're satisfied with the answers. There are a couple of things, a couple of those that I do want to dig a little bit deeper into, though. One of the questions, the second one in the memo, was, are electric assist vehicles allowed on our pathways? Do we need to amend city code? The long and short of that is, we don't have to amend city code, but it might not be a bad idea, and for a couple of reasons. The main one being that Boise late last year, and then Ada County right now, they actually have a hearing on this same topic about the pathways, the green belt, in Ada County properties tomorrow night. They have a public hearing on these and what their codes and policy should be in setting standards for 20 mile an hour e-assist motor vehicles, and defining motor vehicles better, a different classification of motor vehicle, what's allowed in the foothills versus what's allowed maybe along the river and different classifications. But my point there would be, we could have some uniformity in the Treasure Valley, and so you wouldn't have to dismount from one type of a vehicle to get on someone else's pathway if we had some unified system on this that really helped to allow the same types of vehicles to traverse throughout the various cities. So, again, we don't have to change anything, but it may not be a bad idea just for consistency of those users that may want to cross these real but somewhat imaginary lines between cities and the county. So one other thing that I found out kind of along those same lines is that Limebike has reached out to Brook Green at ACHD, so they're in preliminary negotiations with ACHD. I don't know how far that's gone, but their bike head coordinator at ACHD has been in contact with Limebike. City property was another one that came up last week, and I do want to just call your attention to the draft service agreement in the packet. The first reference to city property is on the first page of the agreement, where we authorize Limebike to use city property as defined in section two D. And there's a couple of questions there, we left track changes on, so you can kind of see some of the thought processes here. We've defined city property thus far as all city public parks, city-operated public pathways, and certain portions of the downtown core sidewalks, because we have that master agreement with ACHD for the city core. But there are other city properties, too, you know, Wellsites, Unbound was mentioned as a, you know, potential thing to, to, not Unbound, I'm sorry, the Coast Base Working Place that I can't think of the name right now, Rick was giving the update on earlier.
New Ventures, Larry.
New Ventures, thank you. Other places like that where we may want to call out in this agreement as other city property that bikes, maybe we could accommodate bikes on as well. So I don't know if there's any thoughts on that, or if you like the way that city property is defined currently. Maybe I'll just pause to see if there's any comments on that one.
Any comments?
Just moving along then through the MOU real quick, under section six, operations and maintenance, this is something that I learned from some of the other providers, and that was one of the other requests you had, Mayor, I think it was you that asked to look at other similar-sized cities and others that are implementing a similar system. A recommendation was made that we have some access to unlock and move these bikes should there be a public safety concern with a bike parked in a spot it shouldn't be, and we couldn't wait for them two hours to come and move it. Fire truck needs to get through, and there's a bike there. So what we've included in is at least one master key, and that key even could be virtual. For some of you that were out here, you saw how Megan could just unlock, unlock the bike on an app. So maybe if we had those master privileges given to, you know, engines or, you know, whoever maybe needs access at parks to potentially unlock and move these, honestly, most people could probably pick them up and move them, but this was something that again was sort of a lesson-learned type of a thing, that hey, it would be easier if there were an application and you could roll it, if it's in the middle of a soccer field, picking it up and moving it several hundred yards is, could be problematic. So anyways, that's in the draft. Maybe I'll, just a quick aside, I did share this with Limebike, too, same time I sent it to the clerk, so last Thursday, I believe, I got it to the clerk and shared it with Megan, too. I haven't heard any comments on these additional changes, but she has the same draft, so I don't know if they're agreeable to that provision or not, but just wanted to let you know that they have that, too, so. Moving on then, just another term called out in your, to your attention, on page, it should be page four, I don't see page numbers on here, but section twelve. Originally, it was a three-year term, at the recommendation of the Transportation Commission, we're posing an initial two-year term, but again, just calling that to your attention, that that's one of the changes we've made since last week. And then the final thing, I think on the draft MOU, we filled in a blank, on exhibit A, we would expect, at least initially, right now in the draft form, that they deploy and maintain a minimum of two hundred bicycles in service in any calendar month. So again, in some of the conversations with other communities, that's right, a lot of them are actually at two fifty, but from Meridian, we've seen that two hundred seemed to be a good, at a minimum, a good starting point, they may want to do more, but two hundred seemed appropriate for our community at this time. Just maybe quickly, just to summarize some of the other tidbits that I found in either doing online research or talking or email communications with other communities. Again, in the second page of the memo, you can read some of that, we already talked about how many bikes and deployment, initial deployment and master keys. They recommended a survey, at least one community recommended do a survey before implementing the program to kind of see what the community's needs were, and maybe where or where they wouldn't ride them to make some investment in that, and also to educate and kind of get the word out before deployment, that here's what's going on, but just to survey the public. A bike pathway map, I think that was even actually talked about maybe a couple of weeks ago here, but integration within their software in the app to show where bike routes are, and we have some of that information from ACHD, as well as MDC developed kind of a downtown map that can be put into GIS and shared there, so they would recommend doing that as well. Developing a webpage, considering solutions and accessibility for individuals who do not bank or have smartphone resources, I thought that was an interesting one. So I don't know that we need to fully, but that makes some sense, I mean, not everybody carries a smartphone or has a bank account, so how do we, how do they provide access to those folks that maybe want to use this service but don't have those capabilities? So we don't have any of that in the agreement right now, but just again, some things that I heard, that were maybe recommended, that we didn't end up rolling into the draft MOU. Just some final thoughts on that, some of them, actually quite a few require annual permits and/or becoming, you know, an annual renewal of a license, business license within the city. And I listed there that, if you did a quick search, you could find some of this, in fact, I had a couple of the email stories emailed to me about safety and clutter. Those tended to be more in larger metro areas where there's, you know, not only maybe five hundred to a thousand Limebikes, but you have two or three others providers, and so now you've got hundreds and even thousands of bikes, and they tend to congregate in certain areas, and then they are just everywhere. Again, I don't envision that being a problem in Meridian, at least not in the next one to three years, this kind of pilot term that we're looking at here. Safety, for some of you, it's unfortunate, but we even had an incident out here during the demonstration. There is a user, end-user agreement that one is required to sign, we talked about helmets a little bit, but that is not on us or them to really implement necessarily, but people tend to take more risks on these when it's not their bike, they're not as mindful of being, you know, not to say they aren't obeying traffic laws, but we see some people that are speeding and just otherwise disobeying traffic laws or not making good decisions when trying maneuver in and out of traffic. So again, those things aren't listed here, but there are some lessons-learned horror stories from other major metro areas like Dallas, San Diego, DC, Seattle. I did talk to Aurora, Colorado, they actually had an article in one of the planning magazines that I subscribe to, got a hold of them. It's still in its infancy, right? I mean, they're a startup, so not a lot of benchmarking going on, but they seem to be pretty happy with the results thus far, although it's less than six months old in their community. Tempe, and then Reno Sparks actually did an RFP for these services, and they did it through their metro area, so they had, kind of with the different jurisdictions there, they sent out one RFP to be the bike-share provider, so. I talked to the city of Boise and kind of developing some of this information. So anyways, with that being said, again, thanks to legal staff, I don't know if, yeah, Kim and Mike, Steve Sidaway, were all kind of part of that last couple of weeks, just compiling information and putting together both portions of the memo and the updated MOU. So with that, we'll stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Caleb. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
Madam Mayor, Caleb, on the couple of points, one with the master key, I think if it's something that they already have the capability of or are willing to readily provide that, then sure, include that, but I think when it comes to the, you know, saying initially you have to do two hundred bikes, they, you know, they wouldn't be required to even have this MOU to operate within the city, and so I think that it's advantageous on both parties, part to have this document, to be able to define what happens in certain given situations, but I think that that should stop when it comes to telling them how they're going to do their business, just kind of having a, in this scenario, this is how we're going to deal with it through the rest of it as it's there, but I don't want to put requirements on their level of service.
So Madam Mayor, just a little bit on that, that is what she proposed to you all a couple of weeks ago, they have, this isn't our template, this is theirs, and they're willing to do that, and that's why we kind of even scaled it back a little bit to say two hundred, which is even less than what you said, but it's something that, so we're not really trying, we're just trying to sort of hold them, to your point, though, they probably don't even need this. They could probably operate, since we don't have any business licensing in the city, we don't really have any requirements for this, but again, trying to be consistent with the presentation and documenting that, and I think they are doing it to show good faith, you know, that they are willing to be held to some standard, some performance standard. So we can take it out, but that was something that again, I don't think is a surprise and they're expecting it, in fact, they proposed it to us, so.
And I guess, because some of that will impact public land and how that interaction should happen is, why they have some kind of agreement is, and we'll be enforcing it, whatever it is. If you have these bikes all over and they show up on people's property without permission, it is good to have an agreement of this is how we'll approach certain things.
Definitely. Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
I love contracts, agreements are always helpful, outline the terms. I think the exhibit, the changes you made are great, I think the exhibit standards that they're willing to report back are great. I wouldn't obligate the city to incur any time or expense to do a survey or an app or website or really anything at this early stage, other than this agreement, and let them implement their business model, and we get data back and see what works and what doesn't, before we commit to investing any staff time once it's up and running.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Kavner?
Caleb, just a couple of questions. The memo, which I appreciate, speaks mostly to the assists and the scooters, there's not a lot of discussion about the traditional bike that they offer, and one of my concerns I had in the Transportation Commission and even think here at council is, what happens if somebody abandons one of these bikes someplace? And is it the intention, because I don't see it laid out in the MOU, that the city would then, after three days or five days or ten days, then take that bike and locate it someplace else? Or how are we going to essentially address when these bikes are maybe abandoned in a certain location for a predetermined amount of time? And then my second question was related to the city's ability to terminate the contract. Again, I'm not an expert on these the way Councilmember Borton is, but I didn't see a mechanism where if this doesn't work for the city, and it's not something our citizens support, is there a way for us to terminate the contract before that two-year period without it being mutually agreed upon?
Sixty days.
I didn't see that, I must have, I saw sixty days from them.
No, they have a hundred and eighty days.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just to work backwards there, so termination under section thirteen is laid out there, so they give us a hundred and eighty days, we give them sixty days for any or no reason, so it's pretty favorable. I'm not the attorney, so if Mr. Neri wants to jump in at any point, but it looks like it's pretty favorable to us. I was trying to find it, but I don't know that it speaks to abandon, but inoperable bicycles, we do notify them, and if they don't respond within a certain amount of time, that's kind of how it's addressed. Again, not in that emergency section, operations and maintenance, section six. If Limebike fails to respond within the twenty-four hour period under the non-emergency condition set forth in this paragraph, city reserves the right to charge an administrative fee to basically move, impound it, if you will, or otherwise confiscate it to get the bike back, or, yeah, to move the bike.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
I think the tail end of the table on the exhibit is their obligation of response time action for improperly parked bikes, is that also at least address their commitment to hopefully be responsive once they're notified there's a problem? I don't see it working in another municipal.
Any further comments? Okay, thank you. So, direction from council?
Bring it back?
Bring back an agreement.
Get their blessing and...
So, Madam Mayor, as I mentioned previously, I shared this with Limebike, do you want me to just share when I hear back from them on any changes, and then, you know, is that the next step, or do we want to? This wasn't presented to them as a true proposal, again, it's still in working form, but it's sort of in their court unless you have other things you want to change, and then I can send an updated version and say, here's the next draft, let me know officially what you think, but that's kind of what I already did.
I think you got the comments on what you've presented, and yeah, get that in front of them, and if they agree, get it on an agenda. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Nine H, council, I sent out an email giving you some kind of an overview of the members proposed for the RFP process and kind of the tasks they'll be asked to focus on, and the one person that I had not been able to get a hold of, I have talked with him, and he is hoping to be on one of the submittal teams, and so. One of the citizen names was Julia Jones, I do have a message into her, she is on the Downtown Business Association, as well as has a cabinet shop on Bauer. I would open for any questions, and if Mr. Neri has anything to add.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
So the recommendation is for the two citizens, Brad Hoagland and Julia Jones?
Yes. If there's no discussion, I would like to have this by motion to adopt, and then tomorrow, MDC has it on their agenda as well.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Kavner?
That request, I move that we adopt the RFP committee members as, I guess, amended, as well as their proposed tax, or, excuse me, tasks, and to those names and tasks be submitted to MDC.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All eyes must be carried, thank you. This next item on the Bauer Street facility, council, when we last talked about this, we talked about the need for parking, and it's been further elevated with new division being planned and additional cars to be parked. So you'll see the costs associated with that as part of that budget amendment with the building division and their inspections, but at this point, we'd like to move forward in looking at the least expensive improvement for our fleet vehicles to be parked at this facility, and this would be a short-term in lieu of a longer-term proposal that we're starting to discuss. starting to discuss at this time. City Hall has around 150 employees. We'll add an additional 15 to 20 with the new division. I just, we need fleet parking at this point, and we'll have a longer-term recommendation a little bit further down the road. So, the estimated cost to clean up the Bauer property, and in that, it's cleanup of the gravel yard area, scrap clean, remove weeds, and remove briars. What are briars?
Briar patch?
Nice. Those are sore knee things, right?
Oh.
Actually, it's kind of a fence, but we'll clean that up along the southern perimeter, sweep out the old blacktop area between the north and south buildings, repair the perimeter with cyclone fencing on the west side. It needs posts and possibly a chain link fence, tear down the old garden shed and remove, because it's a hazard. So, there's just some minor stuff that needs to go on to just clean that up, and we're working out with the different departments and directors, how to get the fleet, those fleet vehicles that are not assigned to a specific person, how that mechanics, the mechanics of that is going to work. So, we have a lot of discussions going on, but we need to start the work to gain the additional parking. It's needed today.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer.
A couple of questions for you. Are there any vehicles that get parked here, that are just here because there's parking here, or that could be elsewhere, if there was parking elsewhere?
No. We did this a while ago, and Public Works is a great example. Those inspectors that have a vehicle that they use during the day, they park that on a city, on city property nearest to their home, so it's not on City Hall property, so they don't have two cars here. So, they don't have their fleet vehicle and their personal car. So, we've already gained additional parking with that process, so that's a long way around of answering your question.
So, Madam Mayor, there's no cars that are parked here that people, that are used by people who don't actively use this building?
I can't say that for certain, and there are some that don't have a specific person assigned to the vehicle. They have a department assigned, or two or three people use that same vehicle, so that vehicle is assigned to a department, not a person.
Madam Mayor, follow up. Do we have any data on our average available spots in our parking lot out front throughout the day?
We do have, we're trying to remove the motor pool cars out from the front parking lot. We would like to make that public parking and not have city vehicles or employees park there, and leave that for our citizens.
Madam Mayor, the question is, I guess, do we ever, is there always parking available out there, or do we, with the exceptions of, you know, major events, do we, on a regular basis, run out of space in the front for our citizens?
That varies, and I hate saying that, because we just went through training, and we're not supposed to say that. I wanted to say it depends. Right now, it's tax season, and AARP is consuming all of our parking. Soon, we're going to have early voting. Early voting can consume all of our parking. There seems to be enough uses of City Hall and events of City Hall that that front parking lot could be full a good portion of the time, but I can't give you exacts. Additional questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh.
I guess maybe some clarification on what you're hoping from council tonight would be helpful to me to pick what questions I may have.
Well, this was asked to be brought back this week, so I'm just giving you an update.
Madam Mayor, I can answer that.
Mr. Borton.
I think I might be able to answer that question. But I understood what brought this up was just kind of the fork in the road. Is this city property something that's necessary for, to retain for some particular use now or in the immediate future? The extent of that use may vary, and there's a lot of work that might go into how intense of this use it would be for fleet parking or whatnot. That's not, I guess, as I understood, that's not the discussion for today. I don't, we don't have any of that data necessarily to decide and thumb up or thumb down the extent of the use, but what appeared at least clear to me is if that preliminary fork in the road, is this an asset that should be retained by the city? Certainly. It's going to be needed to some extent. The extent is a future determination, maybe part of a budget discussion, but I would pick a path that says, keep this property for now. I think that's all that today is.
Well, I would beg to differ. We have a parking crunch right now. In fact, we have more people and cars than we have parking spots. And so, our employees right now are parking in the MDC public parking areas, because we can't park them, unless I want to authorize use of our front parking lot, which is public parking, for our employees. So, when I talked last week, or the week before, whenever we discussed this, we did say that in looking at disposing of this property, there is a use, and there is a need, and that need is for parking for City Hall. Councilman Cavanagh said, what is the long-term plan? And that is discussions surrounding what is the long-term plan. But for now, we need a short-term plan, and that's why we're looking at moving fleet vehicles to that parking lot, and needing to make it secure, safe, with safety lighting, and the estimated cost right now is between $17,000 and $20,000 to do the needed, on the cheap, but safe for those that will be using that parking lot.
Madam Mayor, I don't necessarily agree or disagree. I just, none of that data is in front of us today, so if we're to get past the first step and say, yes, we all agree we should keep it, I think we can get there today. If you want us now to say what we should do with it, and what money should be spent, and how, we'll get in the weeds, and we just don't have any of the details to do that today. I think once we get past the first step of, yes, it's going to be retained to use in some way, and as you described, might be the way it's improved, if we try to do that today, we might get lost in the weeds, just because we don't have any of the data that you're talking about, to help us all discuss it intelligently.
Madam Mayor?
So, that's my guess.
Mr. Palmer.
And I'm fine with you not having an ask, other than the asking to keep it, because I just want it on the agenda. So, I've been asking for it, and I appreciate it, you know, being here as an item of discussion, because mine, mine is, I've been wanting to sell it, because I haven't seen a need for it, it's just kind of sitting there rotting. So, if the need for parking is realistic and imminent, then, yeah, we need to make sure we've got the data, and then have that conversation at the appropriate time, hopefully in the next few months, as opposed to, we'll look at it again in a year, we know we might need some parking down the road. I don't want to hold on to it, because there might be some cool thing that somebody, we want to give it to them for, whether it would be a children's museum, or something else. If it's because the city has a realistic and imminent need for something with its proximity to City Hall, so be it. Let's hold on to it, and let's discuss it again in the very, very near future. But if it's to hold on to it because something else might happen, then we need to sell it.
And I've shared some preliminary information with Councilman Borton. We need an imminent solution to a parking crunch today. And if I can have Dell bring something back next week, we can get something out to you this week, for you all to absorb and to chew on, but we do have an imminent need, and it's fueled by the urgency for, one, to park the people we have today, and, two, in light of the needs that we have with the new division coming online. Okay?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh.
Can that be shared with us? I was under the impression, at least at one point, that we were going to be shared, the parking analysis, the amount of spaces that we have available, versus the, I guess, the amount of parking permits that we have allocated to employees. Unless I missed that, I haven't seen that yet.
Yeah, all that is compiled and ready to be shared. It was just continued to this week, and so, we want to know what all you need, and Dell will bring it back next week, so we can get moving forward.
Madam Mayor?
Because he has been tasked for it, yes.
I would be in agreement with Councilman Cavanagh in regards to basic, just information needed, you know, how many parking stalls we have now, how many cars are going to be needed in this new division fleet, how many cars, how many employees have to walk, you know, more than they should, if we had enough parking spaces here, where the shortage is there, and how many spaces are going to be made over there to accommodate if we, you know, need those spaces. So, just some pretty basic information is really what I would like to see.
Thank you. I think that Crystal now has the information from Fire and Public Works on the fleet vehicles, and what are assigned and not, so we can bring those numbers back. Council updates. Mr. Palmer, do you want to start?
Madam Mayor, so with the board that I get to participate in, the Rural Fire District, there's an opening on the district, or on the board. Commissioner Bowman has moved to the other side of town, outside of, outside of the district, or at least outside of his section of it. So, they're putting out a request for people to apply for that, and they've got a pretty quick plan to be able to fill it, hopefully pretty soon. Otherwise, everything is fine and dandy, and they're happy with everything, and they just want to just keep writing checks and enjoying our monthly meeting. Anything to add, Chief?
Mr. Borton?
Madam Mayor, I'm your backup on a lot of these things, and I don't get a lot of backup time, so I don't have much of a report, really. You've been covering the compass and emergency management. I covered last time. They haven't met since, I don't believe, at least I haven't covered it, and I think believe that Alhambah House was, I believe was canceled as well, so I'm striking out.
Well, Madam Mayor, we saw what the Historic Preservation Committee, Commission brought forth with the mural, and we didn't have a quorum for the last meeting, so it was just kind of a bit of an open discussion off the record, and then more discussion on the mural. And with the Air Quality Board, they're more than 90 days behind in a software implementation, so we've moved the meeting to next Monday, because of the Treasure Valley Leadership Conference conflicted with the meeting, and feeling like this is pretty critical, that we're that far behind in a software, and have asked for a deep dive with the timeline as to what the scope of work was, what was the timeline, what the scope of the work, and why has it not been done, because it's impacting our service people out there, making sure that our air quality, we've never had this many tests that are running behind. So, hopefully after next Monday, I'll have a much better update as to why things are so far behind.
Thank you. Mr. Cavanagh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At VRT's executive board meeting last month, we adopted and approved the Valley Connect 2.0 Plan, or I guess a recommendation to the general, who approved that in the general meeting later on that afternoon. Kind of dovetailing on some of our conversations that our council's been having about Limebike has opened a lot of dialogue amongst other municipalities and jurisdictions about implementing something similar in their area of impact, and in areas that aren't being served by the Boise Green Bike. So, I think that while some of the direction that we provided tonight, I think other municipalities will look to our direction. Appreciate having some good conversations with leaders in both Ada and Canyon County about our process and what we've looked to do, and I think that many of them will be looking to our agreement to implement something like that in their municipalities in the weeks and months to come.
Let's find them.
Madam Mayor, well, yep, we heard from the Arts Commission today on the mural, that's the excitement, and the SWAC is, you know, it's still all about recycling, and we'll hear from them, I think, next week. HR is working on their all-employee benefit pay study, including one for fire and for the police that program. They're getting ready, getting the employee engagement survey ready, and that'll be implemented in, set out in the next couple of months. And they're working on getting the all-employee event for September organized at a venue to be determined. So, the date kind of just depends on the venue and what's available. And legal doesn't have anything that, you need me to tell you. You know, when you have, your departments are HR and legal, there's not a whole lot you can say, or know. That's about it.
Mr. Burnt?
Thank you, Mayor. Some things that the Parks Department is working on, this Friday is Arbor Day. There's an Arbor Day ceremony that's going to happen Friday. I'll actually be there to represent, are you going to be there, Mayor? I don't think you are.
No.
So, I'll be representing council mayor, so it'll be great. Also, coming up on May 2nd, before our next workshop, is the Klein Memorial Plaza. Yeah, that's Wednesday, May 2nd, at 4:00 PM. MIAC will be there as the sponsors of the participatory budget project. Also, I had an opportunity to visit the home court with Steve Sidaway and Garrett, and we looked at some of the improvements that they're talking about, that were discussed in Garrett's presentation a while back, and they're working on some different things, maybe some feedback I gave them when I was there, that the council might be interested in. Also, my first meeting with the golf course, I'm in charge of the golf course, so that's going to be a big deal, I think. That's going to be a beginning of next month, and I'm excited for that. I haven't had a meeting with those folks yet, so I'm excited for that, and I'll return and report.
Very good. MADC, the Meridian Anti-Drug Coalition, is electing and renewing executive committee members this month, and they're starting their annual assessment. The compass is going to be The Compass is going to be reviewing work conducted by the Federal Highway and Federal Transit Administrations on May 23rd and 24th. And those results will be reviewed by the Compass Board in August. MDC, we have tomorrow, they'll be getting an update on Opportunity Zone here in the downtown from Brenda. And I have an RFP discussion as well as the ZAMSO's ART. Harvest Transit, I told you last month about their popularity. And you'll be seeing a proposed enhancement for a third bus that I talked with Councilman Borton about. And so, you'll see that coming up. AIC, spring district meetings are April 26 at the Nampa Civic Center. And the Treasure Valley Partnership had a strategic planning retreat and is focused on economic development for the next several months. MYAC is, has elections coming up in two weeks. And they've established a larger committee to do the follow-up they promised you on the participatory budgeting to bring back a larger scale plan. And our faith ambassadors, we have one of them retiring. And so, they've been participating in helping him celebrate his retirement. With that, I have nothing else to report. Anything further in those, in these updates? Just a heads up on the prayer breakfast on Thursday at 6:30 AM, my favorite start to the day. That's going to be at Meridian Senior Center. And there is a community open house for the Eagle Road Project Victory Tahamidi. I saw their two different designs that they're seeking public comment on. That is April 16, 5:30 to 7 at Sienna Elementary. So, I believe that all of you got an invitation to that in your boxes. So, if there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
For item number 10, future meeting topics.
Yes.
Either for a future meeting topic or perhaps this could be addressed with you and Council President Borton. I've grown a little discouraged over the increasing amount of the items that are on our agenda through the Nova's agenda. So, we can typically link through to see what we're going to be having our meeting presentation about, finding those empty without any information. And it's my feelings that if something is going to be on our agenda, that staff can prepare a brief memo so that we have a better understanding as to what we're going to be asked to discuss or consider in that particular meeting. And as we see more and more departments leaving that blank, it makes it, I think, more challenging for me as a council member to prepare for the meeting. I think it also results in additional questions that maybe could be very simply answered in a brief executive summary. So, either a future meeting topic to discuss this as a council or perhaps that's something that you and Councilmember Borton can talk about first or collectively.
And we certainly can. I think some things are updates and they're gathering data clear up to your update. And it's an information-only thing. So, they're not asking for any decisions. But certainly, Councilman Borton and I can have a discussion about that. Okay, with that said, do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I would move we go into executive session pursuant to 74-206, all of them, just about, 1B, C, D, F, J, A, and B, second.
Do you know what you just seconded?
I do know what I just checked off the letters.
Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.